Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Tonight, we have two sessions that are scheduled. First, we will be doing the Westminster Economic Development Agenda. We have a leftover item from two weeks ago that we will have to deal with tonight. And after that, we will then re-adjourn as the Westminster City Council, and we have a study session with a number of items on the agenda for us tonight. So at this time, I will open up the Westminster Economic Development Authority Special Meeting of July the 6th and ask the city clerk to take a roll.
Mayor Atchison.
Here.
Counselor Demott.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
And Counselor Vols.
Here.
Thank you, Captain Board. The first item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes of the June 22nd meeting, Mr. Vols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Westminster Economic Development Authority approve the minutes of the June 22nd, 2020 as presented. Thank you.
And do I have a second, Mr. Seymour?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as published. All those in favor, please signify by the word "I."
I.
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 Any opposed, the same form? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Minutes are accepted as published. Moving on to the first item tonight, we have two actions that must be taken. First is to remove Resolution 208 from the table. Once that's done, then we will come back and deal with the motion itself. It's his time, Mr. Demott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to remove the tabled Resolution Number 208 regarding the purchase and sale agreement for Block D2 in the downtown Westminster with Schmitzer West LLC.
Miss Sights.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, again, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Councils. We now have item, Resolution 208 has been removed from the table and is now prepared for action. Mr. Demott, will you again lead us?
I I move to adopt Resolution Number 208 authorizing Executive Director to execute a purchase and sale agreement for Block D2 in downtown Westminster with Schmitzer West LLC in substantially the same form as presented.
Miss Sights.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on regards to Resolution Number 208?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Vols, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have a quick question. I was at a recent meeting where I was able to talk about this in a positive way, that this new downtown, like I said the last time we touched on this issue, we would have business, retail, entertainment, dining, and the business part of it is new to this, and housing, and new, and that's a positive step in the right direction. So I'm very pleased to be supporting this tonight. I did have a couple of questions come up, though, in the meeting where I brought up this issue, and they talked a little bit about the retail on the first floor, and how viable is that in this day and age? And I said at the time that a couple of us mentioned that this would not be something that's happening right away. It's a year, or two, or three, or whatever, out before we'd have a retail in that location. And then the other question that came up was does this particular retail downtown, and the new downtown, take away from retail in other locations in the city? And I said, my understanding is, we do, it doesn't cannibalize on other retail. Can someone speak to those two questions, and I can get back with the folks that asked those questions about this particular development? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Vols, for the question. John Hall is on the call here tonight, and we've had a lot of discussion internally about retail in the downtown site. It's a mixed-use site. Retail is an important element of the ability to live, work, and shop, and we're very confident in our ability to recover beyond this particular time, and John can speak to that. Thank you, Don, Mr. Chair members of the, of the board. Board Member Vols, thank you for the questions. Happy to answer them as best I can, especially challenging time to be analyzing and leasing out in the retail markets right now. But from the very outset of this project, we set a slightly different course for the types of retail offerings in downtown Westminster. So if you think of Alamo Theater as a great example of something that was new and different to the Westminster market and the Westminster scene, that really is, is a great, a great example of how we're focused on retail that is a little bit different than what we have seen in Westminster heretofore. That's why I'd answer that question. So no, I don't think it cannibalizes. I think it helps expand the market for customers who are interested in coming to Westminster to take in all of the various types of retail establishments that we have in the city. I hope that helps answer your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you for that answer, and I am very pleased to support this tonight. I just had mentioned it to a group, and a couple of questions came up, so I'll get back with them, and thank you for that answer. I appreciate that.
Are there questions or comments on Resolution 208 from the council? Mr. Seymour, did you have a comment, or I just missed you?
No, Mr. Mayor, I jumped in prematurely. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. If there are no other comments from council, we will ask the clerk to do a roll call vote for us, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith. Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes. All right, thank you, Board members. This concludes the business of the Westminster Economic Development Authority for July the 6th. At this time, this meeting is adjourned. We will now reconvene us to Westminster City Council. You have an agenda. We have two or three items that are coming up before that, but I'll turn at this point to the city council members to see if anyone has any comments that they'd like to bring up or report. Miss Sights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two meetings this week, the first of which was the, with the US 36 MCC. So that meeting was on Thursday. The first portion of the meeting was a report from their federal lobbyist, and that can always be a little bit uncomfortable, as Westminster is not participating in paying for that federal lobbyist. But there was a lot of good information provided. There was a transportation bill that passed the House for about a half trillion dollars. However, it doesn't look like, and it holds a lot of stuff that would benefit local governments, that include climate action and infrastructure, like building and resilience. You know, it, it had a lot of good stuff in it, however, it is probably going to die in the Senate by all accounts. So we're gonna have, there's gonna be a break, and then after that, they're gonna focus on appropriations. That'll be done in September. And one thing that I thought was incredibly relevant to Westminster, it appears Joe Nogueth, Congressman Joe Nogueth, is working on an amendment to ease train horn rules. So to try to make it easier to have quiet crossings. And I know that there's a lot of areas of Westminster that are impacted by these crossings. And, and we've worked for quite some time on quiet zones. So I wanted to alert this to council, and then just, you know, if there's interest from council and interest from staff, perhaps it's something we'd want to consider sending a letter of support for an amendment like that, because it does seem to be incredibly relevant for a lot of our residents. There was an update that we got on, on transportation at the legislature this year. Obviously, it was a weird year with COVID-19. I did email you all the report from the lobbyists, kind of going over how all of the bills died. A few of the bills they're predicting will come back in 2021, including one about, you know, carpooling services, taxes on those, and then also having HOV use the EV, or EVs using the HOV lanes. And then we talked a little bit again about the RTV Accountability Committee. There was not a consensus candidate from the US 36 MCC. They are a consensus organization. So they're not gonna put through a singular name, but rather a series of names. Then I had the CC4CA, the Colorado Communities for Climate Action Pandemic Response Team meeting. That meeting was made up of probably about 13 different local government representatives. And there's going to be a series of four meetings. They're gonna be every couple of weeks, and we're gonna discuss these four topics. How COVID has affected members, and then the new needs members may have due to COVID response. Organizational health, how do we make sure we have the revenues to keep CC4CA strong? Do we have to adjust the organization to make sure we have organizational health? How has COVID-19 impacted policy advocacy? And then the fourth is on statewide and regional leadership. We focused on the members. What, what's happening with members? What resources do we need? Basically, should we elevate any priorities due to COVID recovery? And there were some great conversations with that. A lot of opportunities to share best practices and encouraging telecommuting. Worrying about kind of waste, I think there's a lot of uptick in single-use plastics. So how do we have a conversation about conservation in COVID? Concerns about displacement. And so there, there's just a lot up in the air, but it was wonderful to be on the phone with so many different leaders that are looking at, how do we make sure we're expanding the conversation about climate with an equity lens? So it was a really good, good conversation. I look forward to the other meetings. I'll keep you abreast of them.
Mr. Vols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say that the last Saturday, the Environmental Advisory Board organized a cleanup at Little Dry Creek Trail and the dog park along Lowell there on our city's south side. It was very successful. I had a chance to join in as a, as a liaison to our environmental advisory board. And we ended up pulling a lot of stuff out of the creek there, and we ended up with 10 large bags of trash. So I want to commend our Environmental Advisory Board members for their activity and making our slice of our parks and trails look even better. So, thank you.
Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple retirements of note that I wanted to mention. In the Westminster Fire Department, Engineer Steve Norwood retired after 38 years, and also announced today, or late yesterday, a gentleman I know well, had the opportunity to get to know his family. Captain John Bazinella retired after 29 years, so we wish them both the best. Also, this weekend, part of the patriotic support, it was interesting, in our neighborhood, two of our residents in our Westbrook Facebook, Facebook page, were trying to find ways to support our Westminster police officers, and they've started a movement to try to turn our neighborhood blue, to support our officers and, and let them know that they're appreciated, and and that when they drive through our, our neighborhood, that they, they know that the residents are there for them. So that's my updates. Thank you.
Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give the council a quick update. You probably saw my emails. We had spoke about who we wanted to vote for, for the CML Board. And I did attend that meeting, but something happened in the registration, and they didn't have me down as a voting member. So Westminster was not able to vote. I did listen to, to the meeting, however, I'm not sure how the vote turned out yet. But they did just kind of do a recap of what different bills and stuff went through the House, which we've heard most of that in their positions, but they kind of just did a recap and then did the vote for the CML Board.
Okay, Ms. Smith.
Just a quick update for me. On June 24th, the Historic Landmark Board met. It was their continuation, a continuance of their meeting from February 26th, going over a public hearing for the Certificate of Historic Appropriateness for Alterations Proposed at 3915 West 73rd Avenue, and this is the old rodeo market. And the board unanimously approved that historic appropriateness. And that's all the updates for me.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none, Mr. Tripp. I'm sorry. We have an item three under the council reports. As to Counselor Demott, you had requested time to discuss water bills.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So there was some question I had that went back and forth, and they answered, it, it was around people's water bills spiking, and so there was some information passed to me, which made sense to me as far as like what people could do to look for leaks and stuff. The concern that I was trying to raise, though, that I don't think was coming out clear, is I've had multiple residents reach out to me to say that they had spikes over, sometime over the last year. Specifically, I've heard a lot of people talk about it happening last summer, where they would have a huge spike one month, nothing changed the next month, and it just changed. So I don't know how, you know, they could investigate those kind of things, or if we've had a lot of reports. But not only have I been reached out to by residents with claims of that, but I've also seen a lot of it on Nextdoor, where people are claiming they have like a big spike one month, and then it just goes away and goes back to normal. And when they reach out to the utility department, they're told, you know, the, all the good information we have about checking for leaks and all the different programs that we have. So I just wanted to make sure that it was clear what I was asking, that there seems to be a handful of people who have experienced that, and I'm not really sure what, what advice to give them, or what we could do to try to investigate those claims.
Well, Mr. Demott, from one thing, I would always recommend that if they call you about it, refer them to the Public Works Department, so they can start that process of whatever routine they have. And I know that we have been able to resolve some of those through people finding out they had leaks, or they had a bad meter that was replaced, whatever they have, but that would be a good place to start. But Mr. Tripp, if you've got some better advice, please give it to us.
Um, you know, yeah, I will comment, and I'll leave the, the mic open to, to the director if he wants to comment, too. You know, I, I guess I, what I'd like to say is that I've seen, since I took this job five years ago, you know, many, many times, probably hundreds, actually, where these kinds of questions have come in from all of you and from your predecessors, and, and the care and time the finance department staff and the public work staff have taken with individual customers to help them figure out this really troubling problem that people bring to us. You gotta, if, no matter what your, your bills are, if any of them spike in a given month, that, that can be really concerning. And, and, you know, we, we, we really don't want that to happen without explanation. So I would just say, as you've done before, continue to send those folks to us. Let us concierge, I guess I'd say, with them and figure out what we can, what we can help them find. This is gonna be a hot, dry summer. There will be more water used than in previous years because of that. We've also replaced water meters. In some cases, the water meters were not previously accurate, and that, that's worked both ways for customers, and and it's also been under-reported previously. And I'm not saying that any of these cases are those, but we also have multiple programs out there that we presented here a few weeks ago that also provide opportunity for customers to change their landscape and to, to move away from Kentucky Bluegrass that requires a high amount of water and go to different landscape options. And I know that Max and the folks there have programs available with financial assistance to get to that end. So, you know, we, we wanna, our spikes and our increases in water rates due to the necessity of an aging utility are enough. And we don't want there to be reasons that, for an individual customer, that they can, they can stay within a tier potentially, or reduce consumption that helps them. We're very, very committed to that. It's like, you know, top of the list in terms of really, of real concerns this year in particular. With COVID, the council took, you know, a wise action, I think, to not increase rates because of that, and we're very cognizant of it. So I just want everybody that's listening to this to understand that we care about your water bill. We want to provide reliable, clean water to you of the, of the highest quality at the lowest possible price. We don't want you to have to overpay for it because it's being, you know, it's not being put on the lawn, it's being leaked in a system, and we have options for those folks to reduce consumption through different kinds of landscaping. I'll stop there. Max Kirschbaum, you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Don. This is Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities. In a second, I'd like to turn it over to Tammy Hitchens, Finance Director, where utility billing resides. But if I could, maybe, if I could dive, drill directly to your question, Counselor Demott. I would start with, on the, on the backside of each water bill, if there is a paper water bill that the customer receives, it indicates for utility billing customer service, a phone number or an email address as the first stop in that, in that investigation, where if it's a, if it's a a billing spike that appears unexplainable, that's a great place to start. And if it's, if a customer notices a water break, whether it be on either side of the meter, there's also a number listed for reporting a water break. And that, that comes directly to Public Works and Utilities to investigate the break. But Tammy, if I could ask, if I could ask you to speak more specifically about, I think Counselor Demott's question was more about a billing spike.
Yes, so thank you, Tammy Hitchens, Finance Director. So, you know, what we do every, every month, and, and per code, the meters have to be read every, within 33 days. And that, that data is, is fed into our utility billing system. And, and from that, we, we double-check to make sure that, that the, the numbers look reasonable. And what we're able to do, if we do get a phone call from someone, we will, we have a series of things that we'll, we'll do. Starts out by asking questions if there's been any recent changes. For example, I don't know, say a pandemic, and everybody ends up working from home, probably use a little bit more water than you did when you were working at the office. Or, you know, did someone retire and now they're at home versus, versus being there? Are there any medical issues? We, we take a look at the Reed history to see if it, if it looks the same. This time of year, and the fact that there's a lot of spikes, is not all that unusual, because everybody's charging their, their, their irrigation systems. And so you do get large spikes. Another might be the fact that someone has maybe a swimming pool, and they're put, they're filling their, their swimming pool, and those are all reasonable reasons why there would be an increase in usage. The next thing that we would do is we would look and, and, and talk to them and see if their meter is reading 24 hours a day. Because if it's reading 24 hours a day, that's a really good indicator that there might be a leak. We had one customer who swore up and down they didn't have a leak, and then come to find out they had a reverse osmosis system on a coffee maker that, that was running and just literally running water down the drain. And, and so it wasn't a leak per se, it just was the way it was hooked up. It was, it was utilizing water. So we go through that. The other thing that, that could impact particularly, again, for this kind of time of year, is that we do the water, the sewer calculations. And the sewer calculations are based on three months of, of water usage during the winter months, so you're not having irrigation spikes in there to get your average water consumption for, for winter usage with a, with a base of 2,000 gallons per month. And then you have a sewer charge that's associated with that. That actually can have a, have a spike in your bill as well. And, and typically, those, if I'm not mistaken, we get those done after March, so you might see that kind of in the same month as the, as an irrigation system might turn on. And then, you know, we, so we have a whole list of things. We actually have kits that we can send out for leak detection. Obviously, the other really good way to detect if you have a leak in a toilet, which is really a lot of times the culprit with Mr. Flapper, is, you know, put a little food coloring in your tank, and if the bulb ends up being whatever color that is, then you have like a slight leak, and that slight leak over time adds up to a lot. So we have a series of questions that we go through with, with the customers to try to help them troubleshoot what might potentially be the, be the cause. And, but in the end, you know, we take the, the reads from the, from the meter reading utility, and those are, that's what goes through the meter, and that's what's billed. And, you know, we'll do everything we can. If we, if someone does find out that they have a leak, we will go back and we'll make an adjustment to their water. Utilize, we charge them for the water, but it's done, as long as they can prove that they've made the, the repair, we see receipts or whatever, and then we can confirm that, in fact, it's not leaking anymore. Then we, at that point, we give a credit to, to them for the, the water where it would have been, based on the tier, maybe they used, they bumped up into a next tier, and if they wouldn't have been in that tier without the leak, then we, we reduce the water down to the base tier. So, so we have a very, very, various items that we looked at with respect to the accounts to, to try to help, A, troubleshoot, B, give credits where credit, where we can. And, and so I don't know if that answers your question, or if there's anything else I can answer.
I think it's a lot of great information that the three of you have provided. It gives us some extra clarification to me when people ask these questions. It's just the, the people, the handful of people who brought this to my attention were people who, I think, have tried to go through the process and felt that they didn't have a leak, because they'd have like a month where you're talking hundreds of dollars of spikes that they can't explain, that then went away. So when, I think that the concern was, when you talk about a leak, you know, most people would feel, that I've talked to about it, feel that, then it would, you know, follow them to the next month. And I'm sure there's other explanations that maybe they And I'm sure there's other explanations that maybe they just didn't realize they use, you know, and uh uh more water than typical. But um, I just was, I've heard it, this particular um assertion by enough people that I was concerned about it. And I just wanted to kind of talk through, you know, how you guys handle that. And it it sounds like you're pretty thorough. If somebody comes to you and says, hey, I don't think it's a leak, and you help them go through the process, that you can, you know, investigate what else it might be, whether it's a billing error or whatever. And so I I think it does answer my question, but I also want you guys to understand, you know, why. I kind of wanted to really understand the ins and outs of it because I've just had a handful of people kind of bring this up to me. Um, the other thing that uh City Manager Don Tripp had brought up is the, and this just quick question. I'm curious because you brought up the meter replacement program. I know that mine got replaced over over the, you know, the stay-at-home orders. I saw them out in our neighborhood, um, taking care of our neighborhood. So I'm just curious uh percentage-wise where we're at in that that project.
Councillor Demott, this is Max Kirschbaum again. Um, I'd be happy to answer, address that one. Uh, actually, the progress on that contract is moving remarkably well, even through the period of the pandemic. Um, we are scheduled to complete approximately thirty, thirty-one thousand meter replacements by the end of the calendar year. And uh, at this time, we're about, we're, I didn't get a, I don't have an exact count today, but we're approximately forty percent through that total. Um, so we're we're right on on track with where we should be to finish by the end of the year. And just um maybe a comment about a meter replacement. There the the likelihood uh is that um most meters are reading accurately still, even though they've they've exceeded their expected life. Um, most meters are still reading accurately. Uh, there is some national industry information that indicates uh when you switch from antiquated uh meters such as we have that are more than ten years old, um, that it is not uncommon for to see a slight uptick in um metered amount of water with the new meter. And that's simply because as a meter wears out, it tends to fail to the low side. It does not fail to the high side. So that you might see uh a one percent change in what you think is your normal consumption. Most people would never notice one way or another since we bill in units of one thousand gallons. Um, so a unit is is one thousand gallons. And so when you see that on your bill, it's um, it's based on a thousand gallon unit. So a a difference of that magnitude is not is not even detectable as um on a given bill.
Yeah, that's that's good information and I appreciate that. I think that as you guys have shared with that new technology, that there may be some better ability for residents to see in in their usage too. So I think that's exciting that we're moving that along. So I appreciate the information and you guys really laying that out for us so that I could better direct um citizens when they bring these concerns to me.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on this particular item? All right, Mr. Tripp, we'll go back to you again for your report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first thing I want to do is share with you that I had a phone call and contact from Preston Gibson of XL Energy. And I'm just gonna, he provided some written comments here and I'm gonna look at those and so I don't uh misrepresent anything he said. First of all, the temperature outlook for July and August is above average. Secondly, he reported that this may make it difficult for XL Energy to meet peak demand during that time. Um, third, they may be requesting conservation members, measures of the public. Um, so just to summarize, heavy, heavy electrical use is anticipated this summer due to high temperature conditions. And they are considering asking for conservation members, measures of the public. And the reason he brought this to my attention is he wanted me to ask you and to pass it to you. And I would ask for more specifics from him uh if if and when that happens. But they'd appreciate um your help, um, the city's help through its social media in spreading this message to res- residents and businesses. And of course, on the staff side, we'd certainly be happy to do that. Um, that'll be a concern for um our communities. And uh, I just wanted to report that this evening. Um, the second thing I'd like to do, it's just a comment really briefly. I had a, I had an opportunity last week to do um uh the video message with the Chief of Police. Um, I thought it was time for my office to to make comment because we're responsible for and work with our police department as one of our eleven departments of the city. And uh, um, you know, the police officers um are uh uh going through a difficult time throughout the country and it's not any different here in our city. Um, there have been some horrific things happen within other jurisdictions that that are really disgusting. And I would tell you, our police officers would be the first first to say, um, they don't uh, uh, they don't accept that. And that's not um the way we want to look at our work. And it's not the way we want this profession to be looked at in this country. And so I just stood with them to to talk about that the other night. And uh, uh, it's been uh, you know, it's been run through our social media. You may or may not have seen that. I appreciated a chance to do that. But I also want people to understand, as a city, you know, inclus- inclusivity and racial equity and social justice and social equity are very, very important to us. It's foundationally part of our vision. Um, our police department functions within that realm and I'm proud that they do. Um, the final thing I'll say is that Chief Carlson and his deputies have been working on some plans to respond to uh public concerns and to um Senate Bill uh twenty-two seventeen. Um, we're going to be working on those things expeditiously. Uh, one of the items, for instance, is uh uh body worn cameras. Um, we intend to um to get out in front of that just as quickly as we can. It's not required to be implemented until twenty-twenty-three, but it's the law of the land and it's our intention to comply with that um as as quickly as we can afford to do that and make that happen. Um, and so, but in addition to that, you know, we're we're sorting through and it provided an FAQ to the officers for some of the other things that impact their work. Um, I want to thank you, Council, for um, you know, being in the forefront, supporting our police officers, um, supporting our community. And it's uh the pain that we've had with seeing things that have happened throughout the country uh and we we working together and sticking together as a community, uh, we will get through this. Uh, our citizens are very fortunate to have um a very high-performing police department with outstanding leadership, great values. And uh, I'm I'm pleased to serve with them as I know all of you are. So, Mayor, that's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, let's move on to presentations. Uh, Item One is a follow-up on the potential charter amendments. We had deferred some of this until July. So, Mr. Tripp, who do you have?
You know, we have a team uh available to to answer questions. We don't really have a presentation as much as to direct your attention to the Council uh Agenda Memorandum. Um, I had a conversation today with uh the city attorney. I think he may have some comments he wants to make either now or during the course of your conversation. But as you asked us um to bring back, um, we have. Uh, in fact, we looked at a couple of options and I would say those were brought to me uh because the second option is different than what was provided um some weeks ago because it, you you have spoken specifically to the matter of wards. So we we thought that ought to be in an option that you had to consider. So um with that, I mean, Chris, you have certainly, if there's, you want to make any comments or Dave, you can sure jump in right now or we'll listen to your conversation and answer your questions, Council. This is, I want to make something really, really clear. This is clearly a decision in your realm and and your prerogative. Um, we're here to execute whatever it is you decide. Um, you know, we're we've answered specific questions you've had in an honest, candid way. But I but I tell you, we respect the process and we're not, you know, we've not taken a position on this because it really is something the community needs to take a position on through you at this time. And then if you elect to do something on the ballot um at, through the ballot at that time. So that's all I have.
Mr. Lindsay, do you or Mr. Frankel have any comments before I open it up to Council?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe I have anything uh, anything else to add except we're we're following up on uh Council's request to uh return for discussion.
All right, Mr. Frankel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dave Frankel, City Attorney. I'm glad to answer any questions that um Council may have. I do appreciate um Mr. Lindsay's support through this process as well as Ms. Parker.
Okay, I'll turn to Council, Ms. Sykes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the reasons that I believe Council wanted to defer this conversation and this decision to July is just um in the wake of the pandemic, really wanting to make sure we would have um the capacity and resources and understood what the organization was going to look like um or have at least a better idea um in in a COVID-nineteen world. Um, I know tonight we have our COVID-nineteen report after this discussion. Um, but because I feel it's relevant, I think it's the reason we pushed back the discussion. I was going to ask my colleagues if it would be okay if we got that COVID-nineteen discussion first. Um, I I really do feel that, I didn't hear members of Council saying they were against wards in in districts. I heard them wanting to make sure it was the right time, um, given, given this broader context. Would would it, would my colleagues agree to maybe hearing that first before we then have this conversation? But it's especially since we missed last week.
I have uh, two people have indicated they're okay. Is there any others that have any objection to getting the COVID reports and then come back to this item? Mr. Demott?
Um, I guess I would ask City Manager Tripp if he if he thinks that that would change their ability. Us, is there any information in the COVID report that would change our ability to have this executed and put on the ballot this year?
You know, I can't say for sure, Councillor. I I know that uh we haven't had a report for a couple of weeks. It might be good for you to hear. Um, I'll just summarize that the context of the report this evening will provide information about um the status of the virus and its uh, uh, its uh spread in this region. And also an update as as much as we have it today um on financial uh positions that are are changing. Um, so I can't say for certain it'll influence that. I don't want to be held to that, but I, we're certainly very willing and we're ready right now to do the COVID-nineteen report first. Uh, if you'd like to do that.
I guess my opinion is I I really still um just listening to it and seeing that we already have ballot language and knowing what it takes to put something on the ballot, I don't really understand the need to to defer it. I think that the question should be asked and I'm in favor of putting it on the ballot, but I defer to the the majority of Council if they'd like to hear that report first.
Mr. Volz?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I I would be along with um Mayor Prokton Sykes. I would like to hear the the COVID report because that's really the reason we defer. We were, there's so much uncertainty at the time, uh, what COVID would do to our city, what it would do to our local economy and our small businesses. And at the time, we wanted to know what will, what will our staff and what we as Council be particularly? I mean, what will we need to prioritize if we do uh, what will we need to be doing? So I think, I mean, I, we don't have to do it, but I would support it. I think it makes sense because of uh kind of our previous comments. And it it goes along the lines with exactly the reason we asked for a delay to get a little more information about what we're looking at, what we're facing. If we have a better understanding, I think I'd want to know that first. Thank you.
Ms. Gulling?
I would agree. Um, I think that it it's important to know where we stand as a city as we are navigating through COVID. I'd like to know on the financial and that is the primary reason of delaying this vote. So I would like to hear the vote, the the report, please.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to hear COVID, but I don't understand how it relates to our prior discussion in our discussion in May. Um, my understanding was that there wasn't, um, there was a conjecture as far as uh what we were hearing from residents on um, on hearing whether or not they wanted wards or districts. Um, and so I thought that was the point of contention was that um, or at least part of it was that it wasn't quite there for some of us on what we were hearing from our residents. So um, I'm willing to to have a COVID discussion. Um, but I I I don't see how it quite relates to um understanding, at least getting this on the ballot in November.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I, I too am concerned about where we're going on this as far as this discussion. I will, I will not get in the way of a COVID discussion. But also when we speak specifically to this ballot issue, it was a matter of whether we had heard from our residents and I I think we have, we've heard uh from quite a few over the last several weeks. And then also, uh, uh, as far as the cost, this this is, this is minimal in this year. And it's, it's something that um, something will always happen. And it's a matter of what resources do we apply to having citizens' voices heard?
Ms. Gulling?
Yeah, I I'm a little confused because I'm pretty sure that in May or when we had this conversation last, I was very clear that I had heard from residents and I understood what they wanted. But I also have a responsibility to the city and to the financial um safety of our city, making sure that we are making fiscally correct decisions. And um, so I I think that this is very important that we hear where we are with COVID. I know there's going to be a financial component to it. Uh, we haven't had one in quite in a couple of weeks. And I think that it's important that we hear where are we currently sitting? Um, so, so I really think this is important, but I I kind of take issue with that it was a one, a one-track reason because it wasn't. I I argue that there were many reasons why we thought this needed to be delayed temporarily so that we could get a better look of where we are in COVID and how we are handling our public healthy, health, our public safety, our financial situation, uh, where we are allocating resources. This is a very challenging time that is really taxing our city. And I think we have to be very, very contemplative on how we are addressing that.
Right. I don't know that the COVID report would change any Councillor's position on where they think they're at, but I think that there is a piece of information that may be in there. So I'm going to ask the staff to go ahead and uh go with the COVID report. We'll come back to the Item One. And Mr. Tripp, before we can start into that, let me give you, uh, this is a piece that I gave to the chamber group this morning. This is directly related to our COVID report. Effective today, based on the Governor's uh direction last week, we are capable of moving to what's called Protect Our Neighbors. And under this, it's expanded reopening around fifty percent without caps as local outbreaks are managed by strong local systems. Larger gatherings are okay, but mass gatherings are prohibited until there is a treatment or vaccine. There are three large components to this new order from the Governor. It's the healthcare system itself, that a strong public health system is uh an additional healthcare capacity or the key to reopening the economy. And under Protect Our Neighbors, we have to be able to demonstrate the low virus prevalence, healthcare capacity to handle a surge, and a strong public health capacity to contain outbreaks and surges locally, including the ability to test, track, and trace. Now, in that, in order to move the variances request or move decisions from the state CDPHE down to our health departments, first you have to qualify for Protect Our Neighborhoods. And this will be up to each individual health department. And there are eight things that they have to be able to demonstrate to be able to qualify. First is the sufficient hospital bed capacity. Second is sufficient PPE supply. Third is the stable or declining cases of COVID-nineteen hospitalizations. Fourth is fewer new COVID-nineteen cases. Fifth is sufficient testing capacity. Sixth is the ability to implement case investigation and contract tracing protocols. Seventh, the documented surge capacity plans for Seventh, a document search capacity plans for case investigation and contact tracing. An eighth, strategies to offer testing to close contacts and outbreak associated cases. Now, once you fill all of that, then that makes you eligible for moving to protect our neighborhoods. But a bigger piece of that is the mitigation plan that the health departments themselves must submit. And there are five elements to that. First is actions that will be taken if they fall out of compliance with metrics. Second is how will counties promote public compliance with the guidelines? Third is how counties will increase mask wearing in public settings. Fourth is how will they increase influenza vaccine uptake as we approach flu season to ensure we don't lose healthcare system capacity needed for COVID-19? And the fifth part of that mitigation plan is these plans must be approved by local elected leaders, including county commissioners and mayors, the hospitals that serve the county, law enforcement, emergency management, the local public health director, and if applicable, tribes. The big part of this is the mitigation plan. We had a discussion among the mayors and county commissioners for Jefferson County last week along with the Dr. Johnson. And how are they going to put this plan together? One of the conversation pieces was using an example of a restaurant that wants to move from the 50 people max or 50% depending upon their capacity to move to a higher occupancy level. Well, the indication is that somebody has to go out and inspect and there will be four to five criterias the health department would use to say whether or not they can move to a higher level of occupancy. The problem is the health department doesn't have the staff to go out and do this. Currently, they haven't written into the mitigation plan, so. But with the lack of the capacity of the health department to go out and you can imagine how many restaurants, bars, pubs, and other places that want to increase their capacity to return, how long this could potentially take? As municipalities, we don't have people qualified in the healthcare industry to make those decisions for the health department. So we're not sure how they would potentially man those. But one of the things that we have, were advised of is that a number of states are moving to mandated face coverings at all times when in public settings. In Jefferson County, we have three cities that have already gone to mandated masks being Westminster, Wheat Ridge and Golden. And Golden is doing an emergency ordinance on Thursday night to increase the mandates for when masks must be worn. Locally, Aspen, along with several counties have moved to mandated wearing of face coverings along with mandated early closing of restaurants. And the failure to comply can cost the business's license along with a fine. And businesses must mandate face coverings to all people entering those businesses. Now that's the counties that have gone. Typically, Clear Creek, Gilpin, and I believe Summit are the counties that have already taken that step, along with some of the municipalities in there. So the issue of COVID is not gone away. We have over the last two weeks seen another uptick on a statewide basis here in Colorado, to the point the governor is still talking to health departments about whether or not there should be a health department-wide mandate. I know that the mayor of Aurora has asked Tri-County to mandate mask covering for the city of Aurora so that he has the enforcement authority of not only just the city, but also the health department behind it. It is my understanding that the health department is meeting with the city of Aurora later this week to respond to their request. From the statewide basis, that is a lot to put into place in a very short period of time to get approved, to be able to move to the next step. Until then, we stay at safer at home and mandates by the governor. The governor did about a week ago mandate the re-closing of all bars and pubs unless they are set up to serve as a restaurant as well and they are allowed to do, carry out alcohol, but they cannot open as bars and pubs. That date for closing is already taking effect. There is not an indication of how soon that will return. For us here in Westminster, we've all seen the impact on our businesses of what this has done. We have two hotels that have been closed, the Marriott and the Hyatt Place for several weeks because of COVID-19. I received a call from the corporate headquarters for Marriott this morning. They are going to start a phased reopening of the Marriott at Church Ranch with only 30% of capacity. The other part of that is the Hyatt Place. The Hyatt Place will stay closed, date uncertain. They are not at a position where they believe they can get that hotel back open and have enough occupancy. So we're just starting to see some of the impact on the hotels and some of the places like that of what it's doing to our tax base and what's going to happen to us here in the near future. So Mr. Trip, I'll turn to you and the rest of the team for your other updates.
So Mayor and Council, we have a facility openings update. We'll start with Max Kirschbaum and Barbara Opie will give you in response to some information Max is going to provide you. Barbara's going to tell you the, the status of our thinking related to facility openings. And then we have internal financial sustainability with Larry Dorr and maybe others. Economic recovery, John Hall and maybe others from his team. And we'll finish with Dave Frankel in a monthly emergency declaration review. I, you know, I leave the details of these presentations to the staff, but I want to say something because the information we're going to provide tonight, you know, is, is, is darkening a little bit in terms of our financial, our financial future. And I, I just want, I want you to understand that we have been and are working as an organization on providing you alternatives moving forward. I'm very, very confident of our ability to move beyond this pandemic, even if it's longer than what maybe we would think a downturn would be in our economy. We went into this situation with the, the greatest reserves in the city's history with an outstanding bond rating. But moreover, you went into this with an extraordinary staff of folks that are operational experts on how to economize if necessary, financial management experts. We've already seen the benefits of some things through refinancing since we've done with the lower interest rates. And I, I'll just stop there by saying we are, we are very confidently positioned, in my opinion, to get through this, but we're going to need your help, council, as we make policy moving down and set priorities. We'll need the public's help, our feedback as we move forward. And, you know, we're really going to bring that to some very fruitful discussion in our, in our retreat that we have scheduled on July 25th and 6th. But let's get back to today and the here and now. And Max, if you'd kick this off, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Trip. Again, this is Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities. As Don said, this first item will be in two parts. Matt, I'll ask you to bring up the slides for this first part. And as I, when I finish the slot, there's three slides that follow this cover slide. I'll make a transition comment and turn over to Barbara Opie to speak to facility reopening specifically. So the first part of this, I just want to review where we stand in terms of case reporting. The, the slides that I'm going to show you, this first one is at the state level. This is CDPHE's slide as of this morning. And if you see the footnote at the bottom with the URL citing the source, it also indicates that that reporting was through July 4th. And what I would point out about this first slide, so at a state level is we, this slide shows a moving three-day average of positive cases reported. So if you see somewhere between June 17th and June 21st on the X-axis of this slide, or about June 15th, let's call it the middle of June, where as a state we were hitting a low point and you can see a trend line to that point on that three-day average. From that day forward, what you see in the trend, trending is a, is a reversal of that downward trend and now we're on an upward trend of that moving three-day average. So if we go to the next slide, the next two slides will speak to county-reported data. It's very similar data, only the, each of these slides is going to look a little bit different, but what I want to point out, this is the Jefferson County Public Health reporting through July 2nd. As of this morning, their data was through July 2nd. But what you see on this slide is a, is a very similar thing. If I could focus you on, it's hard to tell color and maybe what you're seeing on your screen, but if you focus on the, what appears to be the, the dark green line part of the graph, not the bars, but the line, the darker of the lines, that is the three-day moving average, similar to state reporting for Jefferson County data. And what you see is basically the same thing. We hit a, an approximate low on, on or about June 15th and you see that increase once again forming after June 15th. If you look at the, the lighter shaded line, it's, it's the same kind of data, but only over a seven-day average. You'll see that it's moving somewhat in parallel with the same kind of trend data as the three-day average. If I can move on to the last slide, the last slide shows again in a different presentation format, but it's the same kind of information. This is tri-county health data and I removed the other two counties just for simplification of the slide. So what you're seeing here is Adams County data, the Adams County portion of tri-county health. And again, using this three-day average, you again see a, this is stretched out over not a three-week period, but a, a two-week period going back to June 22nd. So over the last 14 days, you see that three-day moving average, which was less than 10 new cases per day. And, and now we're at a point where it's a little over 30 cases per day using that three-day rolling average. So we've been watching these, specifically these trend charts for for many weeks, but most specifically since we began our reopening process of city-owned facilities. Today, Barbara Opie and I had an opportunity to speak to Dr. Douglas, tri-county health. We were unable to have a similar conversation with Dr. Johnson at Jefferson County Public Health, but we gave him a basic overview of what we have done so far in the facility reopening process and the planning direction that we're heading, headed on based on this information. And is his summary of, of what we presented was that it appears that we are cautious and taking prudent action was his term, that it, that the steps we're taking and proposing are prudent action. With that, I will stop there and ask Barbara to pick up with specific reopening information.
Thank you, Max. As the mayor had actually outlined at the beginning of this section about the protect our neighbor and the move for moving it to the county level to apply and the lengthy criteria that is needed. During that same time period, obviously the governor had been talking about this move to the protect our neighbors framework. However, on last Tuesday, June 30th, we did receive and updated the eighth amended public health order 2028, safer at home and in the vast great outdoors. That was issued and it's effective for June 30th through July 30th. As Max had shared, our numbers continue to climb over the past three, three to four weeks as we have been monitoring it. Based on this early trend and what we are seeing nationally and in our neighboring states with increases in their COVID cases, we have identified the need to pause in our reopening plans. We've been very deliberate in our process to reopen to date and we have been very intentional in reviewing, putting together proposed plans, making sure that we're reviewing them for compliance with CDPHE public health orders and any that might be in place from the counties to ensure that we are protecting the health and safety of our community as well as our employees. As City Council may recall, Mr. Kirschbaum had shared with City Council at the April 20th study session, the conditions under which we would reopen our facilities. One of those items of the criteria was specifically the number of confirmed cases statewide and by Jefferson County Public Health and tri-county public health is on the decline. As reported tonight, the number of confirmed cases has begun to climb in the state and in both counties. Based on this data, we are pausing on additional facility reopenings at this time. We had informed City Council in their June 23rd email update of plans to reopen Stanley Lake to personal paddlecraft on July 10th, which is this Friday. However, in light of this new data and consult, and in consultation with tri-county health, we believe that pausing is appropriate and we will, we not, we will not reopen Stanley Lake at this time on Friday. We do plan to delay the reopening to a future date to be determined. We will continue to prepare for reopenings, both in the preparation and planning process so that we are ready to move as soon as the conditions permit. And we will continue to monitor the data to determine when we should resume our reopenings. We continue to focus on protecting the health and safety of the community and our staff. We will track weekly the cases as Mr. Kirschbaum has outlined to inform our next steps. We've been very eager to reopen our facilities, especially our recreation facilities, but believe that this is, this is the prudent step, given the increases in COVID cases in our, in our community, in our state and those around us. With that, I'd like to turn it back to Don if he has any summary items and then we're happy to take questions.
No, I don't have anything to add. I appreciate Max's explanation of the, what's happening in our region. And I think Barbara's report to you tonight is the right action right now. We talked as a policy committee, we meet several times a week to look at these situations and try to give, try to make the right decisions for the health and safety of our community. And I'm, I'm comfortable with this. I think that it's time to go ahead and move to to Larry and whoever else Larry may have on financial sustainability.
Don, Don can hang on a second. A couple, couple of people had questions on the first piece. Mr. Volz, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a quick question. And in light of what we just heard, it doesn't sound very promising, but I did want to ask, because I've had a lot of people ask me, and I just want to know how to answer this. When do you anticipate in-person live council meetings? Even if it's not in city hall, if it's in a big, large room somewhere where we can be more socially distanced, what when would we be meeting as a council again? If you have any thoughts on that. Thank you.
We'd be happy to entertain a discussion of you all. I think we know a little bit about how many people we could accommodate. Barbara can get into some of those details if you'd like to. We could also agendize this as a specific topic for discussion and get some information sent to you ahead of the meeting next, next Monday. Yeah, I might advise that.
That, that's fine with me. I just, I've, I've gotten several questions in the last couple of weeks on that and I finally am getting around to asking that question. So I think that's fine. I don't need an answer like right now on the spot, but whatever thoughts you may have and what kind of process that would be, I appreciate it. And if it's in a future meeting, that's fine with me as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just a couple of comments. And since we're all talking about data, this is information directly from the CEPHE website too. And we, experts expected us to have an increase as people moved outside for the summer months. So I think we have to balance that against what we have learned about this disease since its inception, because right now we're looking at approximately 117 hospital beds in the entire state of Colorado and a significant, a significant, thank goodness, drop in deaths. And so if we are going to consider opening based on results of infections versus what this is doing to the people, I, I think, I think we're on a bit of a fool's mission. We will continue to see increases. We will continue to see increases as we move through openings. And that is part of what this is going to do. The end result will be a total and complete devastation of our economy and, and increase in health needs, mental health needs for our residents. And I, I think we have to have that in the back of our mind. We can look at numbers all day long, as I do, and look at what the results are on the backend. It's not always the frontend, it's what's happening on the backend and what we're learning and what we're applying from a health standpoint and our healthcare providers. Thank you.
Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the report. And, and I actually appreciate what, um, Council Seymour has stated, um, but I do differ on my opinion about it. Uh, because it's my understanding that often the deaths, um, lag behind the initial increases. So, um, I am interested in, in still making sure that we are doing due diligence in, um, practicing public, um, safety and making sure that we are taking precautions with our public health. Um, my question is, is that have we seen an impact in the hospital beds? I, I know we have limited, um, hospital beds. So I'm curious if, um, we've had any reports from our local hospitals that have indicated that they are feeling overwhelmed, um, that there are not enough beds, not enough ventilators, um, that, um, we are seeing an increase. That's my first question.
I can get, I can get back to you with that number.
Okay.
And it, it may be something that Max has right now, but I, I think I'd, I'd want to double check that and, uh, report back in writing on that. I think you said the key thing at the front end there, um, which would be in part a response that I'd have would be that, um, the virus, um, is the first indicator that hospital beds and the deaths are, are late indicators. And so we, we have a, um, you know, we established a, a set of protocols um, that you approved, uh, early on as a council. And the very first one of those was that we would keep an eye on this, uh, movement of the virus and the expansion of the virus. And that, and that's all we're doing. The other thing that I'd say is we'll be looking at this every Monday. And if we can see that we're not trending, uh, in, in a negative way towards the expansion of the virus, you know, we'll gladly move forward with openings. But at this point, um, we have really talked early on about our openings, uh, complimenting what's actually happening in terms of control of the, of the virus. And so that's why you're hearing what you've heard today.
Thank you. Um, the, the one thing I didn't hear mentioned was, um, how we are communicating. I assume we are putting this on our website, but I just want to make sure, um, as always, and, and I think that we have gotten much better at this in the last year. But we want to stay ahead of the communication. We want to make sure our residents are, understand what we're doing and how we're doing it, uh, what our purposes are. Um, and, and so I'm just curious if we have put out any messaging yet, um, on our website or on our social media.
Also, we haven't, we haven't reported this, uh, change. We wanted to, um, because we just made this decision this morning. We wanted to speak to you first this evening and, uh, then we'll, uh, we'll, um, provide that direction to the community.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for the report.
Mr. Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I believe I heard you, Mr. Mayor, this morning on the chambers, um, thing, say that we had 10, uh, emergency beds or, uh, ICU beds with COVID patients out of Westminster and two of those on ventilators was the information that was shared on the chamber, broadcast this morning. And I, I think Counselor Seymour hits a point that I'm kind of concerned about. And that, this is also some information I heard the mayor share this morning. As far as people not going to get medical help because they're afraid, and I'm using the term afraid, he did not, to go out and get help because of COVID. And so they're hesitant to go to a hospital if they have other, um, things such as, uh, I know the mayor had mentioned like stroke symptoms or maybe heart attack symptoms. Um, and, and the reason I bring those things up is, is I'm along the same thought process as far as what Counselor Seymour said. We have been told all along since March that the goal was to flatten the curve and make sure that we had ample amounts of hospital beds. We have seen a trend downwards in the deaths, which I think is positive and I hope that it stays that way. And I do understand what, um, Counselor Scully is saying about the lag. I guess the, what I'm getting at is, is how do we balance that? When we always knew that there was going to be, um, some level of increase once we got back to business. And I think we'll continue to see that as we, we loosen up and less some of the other, um, papers that I've read, um, where this could possibly go away on its own. We haven't seen that happen yet, but I haven't, have read different, um, experts talk about potentially it weakening as we reach, uh, potentially reach herd immunity. So I'm just curious like how we balance that out and how, and it sounds like, I know you guys look at these numbers every day, um, but do we, you know, how do we judge that threshold? That says, you know, this is an acceptable amount of spike. And I know that's a very hard thing to do when we're talking about potential life and death. Uh, but unfortunately that's the position that, that we're in. Um, you know, and I, you know, to some of Counselor Seymour's points of what, you know, why this is important to all of us is the economic devastation can be equally as bad um, for people's, not just their finances, but also their, their actual health and their ability to survive, um, past this pandemic. So I'm just curious how, how we balance that out and, and, and create those thresholds so that we understand what a reasonable, um, trend upwards is as things loosen up.
Thank you, Counselor Demont for the question. Um, I guess, let, let me say first of all, just to clarify, because if somebody came in, into the middle of this conversation, so they understand what we've suggested here tonight, what, what our plan is. Our plan is to not open Sandy Lake for paddle boarding, uh, this weekend and to suspend, uh, opening of other recreational and public facilities, uh, that were planned in the next couple of weeks. But to only do that until we look at the data again next Monday and, uh, hope that, uh, people are wearing their face coverings and that, uh, they are social distancing even, even with some of these facilities open. Um, and hope, and hoping to be able to reverse that. So we're not talking about, um, we don't have, you know, the, the decision for, on businesses is really not our, not our decision. So I just want to be really clear about that. Um, you know, first of all, we look at the, it's not our data. You know, it's the state, it's a Department of Public Health, uh, it's data and Tri-County and Jefferson County's data that are the two health departments that, uh, we, we rely on for policymaking in this area. And we interpret that. And then what we did beyond that today, after looking at it and having observed it and seen the trend line start to go back up, um, we called them and we were able to reach one of the two. Um, and, um, you know, uh, Dr. Douglas confirmed what we had in mind. Um, but it's really their data that we're following. And we're really only following our policy that we started with going into this. And that was, is that if we saw an increase, um, that we would, uh, we would, uh, remember we, we used the term crack the valve. Um, I guess that's what I'm, I'm saying we did. We cracked the valve. And we're not suggesting we close things that are already open. We're just suggesting that we not open more without getting a little more data and making sure that, um, uh, we're not exceeding, um, you know, our hope to flatten the curve and to keep it flat.
Well, I think that that's, that's a, a good, um, summary and synopsis of, of where we're at. I think that the reason that it's important, um, even though we don't control some of those county things, we do speak into those and, you know, I've definitely heard personally from the business community that they want to assure that, uh, we're advocating for, um, not just being responsible as far as stopping the spread, but, you know, not being too cautious where we're not allowing people to actually, um, financially survive this, um, business or individual or otherwise. So, you know, but I think that's a good, um, explanation that you just gave as far as, um, you know, kind of sticking where we're at as far as cracking the valve and, and re looking at this in the near future. And I think that's important for people to understand that that's what you're suggesting as well. So, you know, with that being said, I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping our eye on the prize as far as, this is what we were initially asking people to do, both, you know, from the state level and, you know, we're helping, um, advocate that we should listen to those, um, county level and state level officials. But I want to make sure that we're comfortable in, in what they're, they're suggesting and that we're trying to keep balances, you know, as advocates for the people who live and do business in the city. So I appreciate it.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have two quick questions. Um, so I, I may have missed it, but is everything that we have opened to date staying open? Um, are we not, we're not regressing, correct?
No, we're, we're keeping everything open that's open to date. And we're not, we're making a decision to not open what we previously announced at Stanley Lake and what's planned in the future. But we are not suggesting, um, that we would close anything that's been open to date that are public facilities.
Great. Thank you. Uh, my other question is, I'm not sure if we have ever received an update. I know that, um, that the old location for the St. Anthony's Hospital, um, was to be used for overflow. Um, had, what, where are we at with that setup? Is that still being, um, established as an overflow facility? Uh, or is that null and void at this point?
You know, Counsel, there may be staff members who are familiar with that. That really is not our operation, even though it exists in our city. Um, it's been handled by others, but does anybody on the call tonight have knowledge as to what the status of that facility is and it, and the plan to use it for, um, hospital beds?
Don, I think I can take it. As of last Thursday, it is still considered a site for a surge facility. It has no patients in it today.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
This is Dave Downing. Uh, I can confirm that our building division folks have been, have continued to meet with, uh, uh, representatives of that facility. So to my knowledge, it's still considered as an overflow site.
But we have not used it to date, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, Don, if you go ahead with the, uh, internal financial sustainability piece, or whoever's covering that.
Certainly Larry, uh, John and, uh, Dave. Um, go ahead, please. And thank you, Counsel, for all your great questions. I appreciate, um, your, your concern as we have about both what we're able to provide to the community this summer in the way of, um, opportunity and also our business community and, and their needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp, and, uh, thank you, Mayor and members of city council. Once again, this is Larry Dorr, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy City Manager. Well, um, I do have a, a report for tonight and, uh, update on cares, spending and, uh, funding proposals and so forth. So, uh, thank you for the chance to address you. And, uh, we've, we've had a, for those in the audience may not know, we've had a weekly financial update at every council meeting since, uh, mid-March. And we're going to continue to do that with all of the information that we have. You know, this public health crisis has obviously created the financial crisis. Uh, and there are two things for us to keep in mind as we think about this. I, I'll, I know it's, it's a little repetitive, but it, it bears repeating. And that is that we have this short-term gap and we've been talking about it very regularly. We have these closures and we're having some reopenings. And, and for the short term, this gap is, uh, creating a multi-millions of dollars in revenue loss to the city. Um, and we have reserves, we have a carryover. We've talked about those kinds of things. We're refinancing debts. We are working very hard to, uh, maintain the city's working capital and, and keep services, uh, provided for. Um, you know, we're, we're looking at that, uh, every day really to make sure that we can bridge this short-term gap. We have a hiring freeze, a selective hiring freeze with some exceptions. Um, and so in the short term, we're trying to bridge this gap. What we're now thinking more and more about is the long-term gap and what this looks like. Um, if we will return to 100% revenues, uh, and when? Uh, if we will return to some level of revenues for the long-term that's less than that? Uh, and then by how much? Um, certainly I suppose there's some probability that revenues could increase, uh, over the long haul. That's not out of the, completely out of the realm of possibility, but, uh, but probably the least, uh, possible outcome. So short-term and long-term, I think it's important for us to, uh, think strategically about that long-term, uh, impact. And we're transitioning to more work around what the long-term impacts may be. Uh, and certainly we'll be talking to city council about that later on in the month, uh, in, in some more detail, but I just want to set the table with that. What we have in, in hand so far as data is really related to March, April and May. And, uh, as we know, uh, things essentially closed in whole in March, April and May. We collected those sales taxes at the end of June and we're analyzing them. And, uh, you know, the numbers are, are looking familiar to April and they're generally on par with what our expectations were. And, you know, we knew that there would be full closures and, and some expectations related to that. I'm pleased to report that our forecasting has been very, very good, uh, throughout all of that. Um, what's becoming more interesting is, and, and concerning is that in March, April, when we began doing our short-term gap analysis, we forecasted some soft openings in June. And we've seen that. Uh, we saw this beginning of the cracking of the valve. And let me just make sure that I'm clear. My comments are related to those things happening in the business community and the retail business community, uh, you know, hard goods, soft goods, grocery, restaurants, all of those kinds of things. I'm not talking about, uh, city facility openings, uh, uh, as was discussed in the, the first item of the update. So we saw some of that and I, I think we had a lot of encouragement. We, uh, had dine-in restaurants in June, uh, bars, uh, some, you know, retail establishments, both with carryout and limited, uh, foot traffic. Um, we even, just as, just as recent as a couple of weeks ago, you'll recall that there, we were having discussions about movie theaters, uh, opening up across the country and in Westminster and, and all of those things, uh, were in the positive. But what's concerning is that just, uh, within the last couple of weeks, uh, since my last report is now, uh, the governor, uh, has ordered this closure of bars that, uh, the mayor described. Also, uh, we have information related to lodging and tourism, which, uh, should be, uh, really going in a different direction than they are. And then also the caseload, as Mr. Kirschbaum and Ms. Opie described, um, are causing, uh, reflection. And for us, the idea that in July, we thought that our, our original forecast is what is that? After some soft openings, uh, we would not only, uh, uh, see this curve flatten, but on, continue on a decreasing trend. So it's concerning from the chief financial officer's perspective to see a little bit of a regression, uh, and, uh, needing more data and having more caution around what this means. Um, interestingly, we, we thought about that a couple of weeks ago when we met with our executive leadership team. Uh, we have started, uh, evaluating multiple scenario forecasting. Uh, we have, uh, done some internal reviews and, um, discussion around what the long-term strategic impact might be. Um, we are looking at, uh, changes in the revenue, uh, that don't slowly return to a normal, but maybe have interim interruptions or potentially another decline during a winter time, fall/winter time, um, return of the virus and what that might mean to another short-term gap and then a long-term recovery to the city. So we're doing this multi-scenarios forecasting and, uh, attempting to really, uh, understand what the impacts of that might be. So, uh, we'll be bringing that work, uh, in its next draft and, and, uh, in its evolved format to council's, uh, retreat on July 25th. And of course we'll have a, a full, uh, update in our updated COVID Chronicle and financial reports, uh, in detail that cover, uh, through the end of June. As each month goes by, we're learning more and more about the financial crisis and clearly things are, are coming into better focus. We're also working internally. We've, we've released our budget crowdsourcing initiative internally, uh, for our workforce to, uh, generate ideas for business process efficiencies and opportunities for savings. So we're working on all of those, uh, in a view of council's coming retreat on July 25th and 26th. But what I want to say is two things. This July, uh, sort of regression with bars, uh, changing, uh, as ordered by the governor is a bit concerning because it's the, related generally to cases. And that could lead to potentially additional closures, which would cause us to really think through, uh, another major revision to our short-term and potentially our long-term forecast. So, uh, we do have our May revenues in, uh, our sales taxes. We're taking a closer look at them, but again, I'll just, uh, transition by saying those are generally, uh, on. But again, I'll just transition by saying those are generally on with what we're expecting to see. So the second half of my report tonight is related to care spending. And I'll just ask Mr. Williams if he would take on my first slide, Mr. Williams, if you kindly put that up. Thank you, sir. Since the city has entered into intergovernmental agreements with both Adams County and Jefferson County, we've had many conversations about the focus of the coronavirus aid, recovery and economic security act and the funds that the city has received and how to best deploy those. We want to keep council and the public informed as we move through that. And as a function of that, a council has developed four key principles that would guide funding and choices for the recovery of the Westminster community. And so I want to, we have, we have, I have presented in the past on investments in rental assistance for a small business. And you've heard about our Westy Rise and Dine as well. And tonight I want to provide a quick report on cares, social recovery. And just describe that about one-tenth, 10% of our cares funding is devoted to programs that will help rebuild community connections and promote wellness. It was described by a few counselors earlier that there's been an emotional impact of both the public health crisis and the financial crisis. And the design of this social recovery dimension of cares is such that it will attempt to address those. So just as in the past, I've given some updates, let me just kind of move through some of the programs. Mr. Williams, if you'd give us our next slide. The first thing that we believe will be productive is to engage the public and our staff in outdoor classroom settings. We've learned much and heard much about how outdoor classrooms can provide future opportunities for meetings that, you know, very well could include advisory boards, commissions, potentially gatherings of staff for meetings and, and other opportunities in outdoor classrooms. We'd like to have those constructed. We have to have these constructed by the end of the year, but we believe the best opportunity to do that is at City Hall and at City Park. Next, we also know that many of our patrons of the arts would like to have the opportunity to engage in, in art and in their programs in a safe and structured way that will allow people once again to be in an outdoor environment where it is generally believed that the spread of the virus is less common and people can be appropriately socially distanced and so forth. Mr. Williams, next slide. Next, I wanted to just bring forth the last couple of things here is related to the idea of bringing neighborhoods together. We want to inspire neighbors to gather in places, again, outdoors where they can have gatherings of appropriate sizes with, with relevant programming and so forth that will drive that engagement. And again, assisted social recovery. A mobile library, we know that our library patrons are not just bookmobile pickup and delivery of books, but engage in our libraries in different ways. And we want to be able to bring our staff and technology and other library materials to the public. And we believe that we can do that through our mobile library program. And then last but not least is the idea of having our self-serve kiosks at Stanley Lake, which would allow for folks to mitigate contact with our staff. And I think we think more and more patrons have and will continue to be more comfortable with self-service kiosks that will allow them to pay fees and complete rentals when those are available, that will increase social distancing protocols, but will provide for safety and security and screening and so forth. So with that, Mr. Williams, if you would take me to the next slide. I'll just transition to the second half of the cares update and I will introduce Jenny Grafton, the city's housing policy and development manager. He'll talk a little bit about this initiative related to people and programs serving people as it relates to housing assistance and our Westy Rise grant program that's happening here. And then, of course, we would be available along with others to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you. And Ms. Grafton?
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Dorr. So counsel, this is the first of the proposed programs under the people and programs serving people category. Counsel has certainly expressed repeatedly concern for our residents, both in meeting their rent and their mortgage obligations. There has been a tremendous impact to our residents across the board. And so this is certainly an area where we do a lot of work with our partners and it's taken a bit of time to put this together. But if, Matt, if you would go ahead and advance the next slide, I'd like to run you through that. So there have been without question impact to residents through loss of employment or reduction in their hours. Some, of course, also dealing with medical costs associated with the pandemic. There have been a number of temporary measures that have somewhat blunted the evictions or foreclosures. But many of those extensions are coming to an end as we approach July and going into August. So there's both been the statewide moratorium on rent that will be coming up on the 13th. And I should correct that, not on rent, but on the evictions. Normally, it's a 10-day process that landlords have to provide to a tenant before evicting them. We have been in a period where that was extended to 30-day notice. That will expire July 13th. We know that a number of unemployment benefits will also be tapering off later in July. Federal moratoriums on FHA mortgages and federal properties also starting to conclude. So we're expecting that we're going to see a greater impact on households as those programs come to a close. Next slide, please. So in response to that, staff has been working very closely with our housing partners to craft a substantial program that is responsive, impactful and easy for residents to navigate. This has really been made possible by developing some common criteria across multiple jurisdictions. So we have been talking with the cities of Thornton and Commerce City, each wanting to put in their own portion of cares funds directly to benefit their residents, but under the umbrella of administration that Maker Housing Partners can provide for us. Now, Maker has agreed to serve all residents of Westminster, both Adams County and Jefferson County. But I want to be clear that the money we're proposing would only be going to Westminster residents. Thornton would be supporting their residents, vice versa. Next slide, please. So in order to move such a substantial amount of assistance through to our communities quickly and in a way that is easy to navigate, it was necessary for the participating jurisdictions to come to some common criteria. And I want to share with counsel that these criteria have already been presented to the city councils in both Thornton and Commerce City. So they're not really negotiable for us at this point. If we didn't want to adhere to them, we would be unlikely to be able to participate in something of this scale with Maker. And this is a slide where I imagine there will be some questions, so I'm going to go through it quickly. But as Deputy City Manager Dorr said, we will certainly take further questions. The program as proposed would benefit all Westminster residents at a household income of 120% of area median income or less. So that is higher than any of our other programs have gone up to, to date. Most significantly, this is not annual household income at this point. We are now talking about residents calculating from their most recent month when they apply. So if they've experienced job loss, the previously had a very high income, that is not going to count against them. Applicants will have to self-attest, so they will be signing, authorizing the processing of the application and attesting to the truthfulness of their materials and the impact due to COVID-19. Now applicants, and these can be renters or mortgage holders, they can apply for multiple months up until the end of the grant cycle in December. Housing costs that they have perhaps foregone in terms of payment agreements with landlords or deferred mortgage payments, those costs that are in arrears can now be caught up with this grant. There are certain things that cannot be included just by virtue of the cares funding. So late fees are not able to be covered. HOA fees, however, can be. So I breezed through the previous slide rather quickly because it was a summary of the program. Because we are talking about a partnership agreement with Maker Housing Partners to administer, we would actually be providing you with an intergovernmental agreement that would go into all of the specifics and allow council to have a much more thorough understanding of the details of the proposed program. And would tentatively be bringing that back to council for action and a vote on July 27th, which would then allow us to launch the program with Maker the beginning of August, really having an impact as many of these costs come due for our residents. So with that, I will conclude and turn this back over to Deputy City Manager Dorr.
Thank you, Ms. Grafton. I appreciate that. And Mayor and counsel, as in the past, we've attempted to update and describe things happening related to cares. And we'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mayor, we just want to have you, if you can, just sort of take an informal pulse with counsel to make sure that we're on track with these things will continue. We already have your appropriations approved under our various guidelines and we're ready to proceed with a number of these things. As you heard Ms. Grafton describe, we will have to come back in another step to get council approval for various agreements, potentially some procurement items as well. But I just want to test that we're on course and are ready for next steps on these initiatives. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dorr, we're going to ask you to hold there. I'm going to give counsel a few minutes to think about the last piece that Ms. Grafton presented. And, excuse me, and at the same time, give the council a short bio break. So by my count, it's about 8:10. Let's try to be back by 8:15, give you about five minutes. We are on a recess until that time.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with you, sir. Mayor Atchison.
I'm here.
Counselor Demott. Mayor Protem Sights. Counselor Seymour.
My, I'm here.
My apologies, I'm here.
No worries. All right, Sights and Seymour are both present. Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
And we'll try Counselor Demott again. I think we may just be waiting on one, Mr. Mayor.
We'll wait till that one's back.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Demott. I'm back. I'm not sure if you were waiting on me or not.
Yep, we were. So you're all back. All right, we have everyone back at this point. I have a couple of people who are already in the queue for questions. And I know I have some more comments to come back from Mr. Dorr in a few minutes. But to try to catch a couple of these questions, Ms. Scully, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So these programs are just amazing. And I'm just so impressed with the work that the staff has done on this. A lot of things I never would have thought of and I just, I'm just blown away. There are some things, though, that I do have questions about. So all of these programs are paid for by the Cares Act. None of this comes out of our general fund from the city. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Scully. You're correct. And we have such strict guidelines on what these funds could be used for. Obviously, it, my earlier comments regarding this steep drop in revenue and the financial impact to the city's reserves and overall long-term financial outlook sounds so different because we cannot use cares to backfill the city's revenue. Unfortunately, we can just mitigate these impacts that are happening to Westminster communities. So answer is yes, they will just be spent from the cares dollars.
And, and remind me again, I know that we've received cares funding from a number of places. Specifically, both of our counties have given us money and we've approved that. Can you just tell me real quick how much roughly we have received in Cares Act money?
Yes, we're, we are under contract by intergovernmental agreement to receive approximately $9 million, just, just a touch less than that. We've received in cash three and a half million thus far. We're receiving that in chunks. And as it's spent, we are, provided those funds in advance. But we're on a very tight timeline, hence the reason that I've made this a part of the weekly updates is all of those funds have to be spent on these various programs. Uh but we're on a very tight timeline, uh hence the reason that I've made this a part of the weekly updates is all of those funds have to be spent on these various programs. Um, well, generally before the end of the year, but uh with some additional caveats as well. So uh three and a half million in cash received and uh up to nine million total as we progress through it. We we do intend, uh we're working very hard and carefully to make sure that these uh federal tax funds get uh implemented in the city of Westminster.
Okay, and and I did appreciate that um we made specific mention that we are spending these funds on both sides of our county, both counties. Um, I think that's really important that I want residents to really understand that this is this is applicable to both our counties, that these services are all for everyone in Westminster. Um, I thought that was a really important point. Um, I really love this Westy Rise Above Housing Assistance Grant. I I just can't even tell you. I I think that's the most amazing thing um to to help those who have been most impacted by COVID. Um, in any way we can, but specifically housing, there's nothing more devastating than not being able to pay your rent or possibly losing your housing. In this time, so I am so impressed with this grant. Um, I did have some questions. Is this a a one-time grant? So like, somebody applies for it, they can only apply once? Um, or will there be like a second phase and a third phase? Um, because we do know that this is an ongoing situation, and so I'm just curious.
Sure, thank you, Counselor Scully. So it is actually something that an individual can apply for any time within the grant period, so they could technically apply for rent or mortgage payments back to April if they missed those and all the way until the end of December.
Excellent, and how much is the overall cost of that grant program to the to use using the CARES Act funding?
So it is somewhat limited by the capacity of the organization to administer. Um, we think that this is actually going to provide substantial relief to a number of residents. The approximate total that would be just direct assistance for rent and mortgage is four hundred thousand. Uh Maker has asked us for a portion of the funds, um up to forty thousand to go to, they're gonna have to hire some additional contract staff to process all of the applications. But four hundred thousand is what we are talking about for direct benefit.
And do we have any um anticipation of what individual residents may ask for and be awarded?
Not yet, because this program hasn't been launched to have anything to compare to yet.
Okay, and then I I did have a concern that um we're not covering fees. I understand that that's probably a federal guideline. Um, what are we trying to encourage our landlords and um um our different our different um entities to maybe not charge the fees? It there's nothing worse than being able to make a payment, but still having to pay fees for being late on something that is really out of your control. So I'm just curious as to, do we have any plans that we can maybe help out, or what are we doing around that?
Uh, well, Counselor Scully, as you alluded to, yes, there there are some limitations, just simply why the CARES funds can't go to the late fees. Um, our hope is that many of the the landlords and um mortgage holders have already been very, very accommodating um to their to their renters, to their tenants. Um, but we're hoping that if the rent and any other fees, not late fees, can be covered, that that will allow the renters or the mortgage holders to be able to cover the late fee portion.
Are we thinking of maybe providing um educational material to our residents so that maybe they can initiate a conversation with their landlords um on the fees of of maybe asking for the fees to be waived or um delayed or something of that nature?
Sure, there there are really two parts um to answer that. So one is that we have on our housing resources page a number of links that do direct people to some of those resources that are developed by experts in the field. But I think another important point I didn't um spend time on is that um as council knows, we have already supported Colorado Legal Services, which works to provide assistance to um tenants that are experiencing the threat of eviction. They are expecting to see an uptick um in the demand for their services. And so one of the things that Maker has coordinated is for the participating jurisdictions to do a direct pass-through to Colorado Legal Services to supplement um their their assistance that they receive to to expand services during this time.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you so much. I all your work on this is just tremendous. Um, I can't even imagine how how much um how much time went into thinking about this and working on this, and I just, I'm so appreciative of your work. So thank you very much. That's all for me tonight.
Ms. Sights.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I just wanna, I'm gonna start with Larry's uh or rather um Deputy City Manager Door's um report, and then I'll go into Jenny's. Um, so I was really heartened to hear, um, I guess not surprised, but relieved to hear that we're doing some work on multi-scenario planning and forecasting um in different, you know, potential um revenue shortfall scenarios. Um. I I was wondering, and and then I would imagine figuring out what next, um depending on if we hit those those scenarios. Um. I I have recently been thinking quite a bit about the ripple effect uh of COVID nineteen and and you know, hearing that the Marriott and um others were closed. Um, it's scary, but I really, I remember going out when the Sparkler Tournament is normally here and you're not able to get into a restaurant. Um, and so have we thought, like, with the loss of some of those events, do we have for July an anticipated revenue shortfall, knowing those events didn't happen, or is that not something we've predicted yet?
Thank you for the question. Uh Larry Door speaking, Chief Financial Officer. We're doing a number of things related to our revenue forecast. We've we've put about two hundred lines, different line items of revenue really under a microscope. Uh, some of those things will be greatly affected, others will not. And we tended to focus on the source of revenue, but um to answer your question directly, no, we haven't uh immediately looked at this particular tournament or what the impacts might be, to be real honest. Uh, we will start to do those kinds of things as we get into even more scenarios, but uh we're looking a little bit of a higher level. Uh, at the same time, I'll say that our forecast for July, our original forecast of a couple of months ago, really anticipated much more economic activity than we anticipate seeing throughout the course of July. So I want to just caution and warn that I I believe that this re-forecast will for at least July and um depending on where the numbers go in the next uh number of weeks, uh potentially for August and September could have impacts as well as we get into really heavy retail modes, things like back-to-school shopping. And that, of course, back-to-school shopping could be impacted by in-class participation and a number of different things. So we're attempting to do some macroeconomic work uh thus far, and we'll be doing more microeconomic work on things like uh the tournament that you just described, back-to-school uh activities. Um, you know, certainly as we thought about a little bit about Fourth of July um fireworks and and those not happening across the front range in Westminster, what that might have meant. So uh both macro and microeconomic levels. Um, and we'll be putting numbers to those in anticipation of council's month-end work.
Um, and thank you for that. I and I wasn't clear with my question. I was hoping we were um aggregating all of those little things. Um, but but by tracking the impact even on that granular level, I think it does help us in the future when we're trying to attract um a a sparkler, understanding sometimes um the benefit of it is more clearly seen when we lose it. Um, so looking at the opportunities to capture this data and use it for policymaking in the future. Um. Would you say, because this is really early and we had, we were kind of on track with our predictions of what we thought would happen with the stopped openings in June, and then this is not what we predicted, the bars and and lodging closing. I know it's too soon to say, but do you think it is more likely we're gonna see a scenario with a significant drop in revenues? Or are you uncomfortable making that prediction at this point?
Thanks. I you know, I would say thus far uh that revenues for July should be better than May, for example, because we have indoor dining. Uh, we have more of that happening, uh certainly, yet uh a lot of the financial assistance is beginning to taper off, uh unfortunately, uh for a lot of folks in terms of uh the initial care stimulus, uh folks getting their debit cards, getting their ACH uh payments, checks to the house, things like that. So those are uh beginning to diminish and that'll have an impact. So um, you you know, it I'll use the cracking the valve analogy, uh because it's been used already and it's understandable is we, the valve is cracking and things for July are likely to be better than they were certainly from from May when we had full closures, but our original forecast and and we anticipated a revenue shortfall for twenty twenty of twenty to thirty million. Uh, that anticipated a, may I say, a faster cracking of the valve than we're currently experiencing uh with um movie theaters still closed, um retail activities significantly diminished, some business uh closures that we've learned about, um certainly hospitality uh as was described earlier, and then um you know, the the limited foot traffic that occurs from, again, theaters, bars, those kinds of things, uh getting people outside and so forth. So I would say um we're experiencing a slower financial uh result due to a slower cracking of the valve and folks' uh participation uh out in these uh communities. Another thing for us to watch is I, you know, we are paying attention to what's happening in other states. We can hearken back to uh a time uh in March when we saw caseloads in other states uh in the eastern United States and very close and uh now in states like Arizona uh where uh their indoor dining, the reopening of indoor dining in other states is being delayed and in some uh cities, uh indoor dining is is being um is being curtailed. So I will be watch watching what will happen at the state level related to those kinds of economic activities, and I think those would significantly uh recast our a vision of what may happen in this short term. Um, so again, uh we anticipated a wider cracking of the valve here by July sixth, uh a couple of months ago. Um, so we are experiencing improvement against May, but um this uptick in cases is concerning, obviously from a public health, but also from a financial crisis perspective as well.
So with that, um, so with the the, I guess, the valve cracking at the rate we had contemplated, we thought there would be about a twenty to thirty million short-term gap. And I know you um and the rest of the um executive team were working on on preserving our working capital, closing that gap through things like the hiring freeze um and refinancing. Um, and then some of the CARES dollars, I think, are offsetting some of the COVID-related expenses, obviously can't backfill our budget. Um. With this happen, with recovery happening at a slower clip, um because of some of this, do we feel we'll still be able to um preserve our working capital without excessively dipping into our reserves, or um, is this gonna change our strategy? And I know other communities, and I don't want to put you on the spot with this, but I know other communities had a very different response to Westminster, and they started where we don't want to go, which was in in furloughs and layoffs and on a pretty large scale. I mean, even our neighboring communities um ha- have gone that route. Um, so I just, I'm I'm just kind of concerned about what does this mean for the organization um and our ability to continue to provide those critical um services to our residents, both in the short term and the long term. And I I know I'm I'm asking you kind of to have a crystal ball, but I I'd like to understand the level of um concern.
Well, uh, let's see, uh be assured that we have experience uh and a really strong team. Uh, we have no plans for layoffs. Um, w- we have no plans for furloughs. Um, we have many uh things that we can do to address uh this gap. Um, I will say that the fork, the revised forecast is frankly, will frankly be more pessimistic. That's just a fact of the matter, because uh as I said in March and April, uh again, we anticipated a significant return to economic uh activity in July. Uh, and it it appears that that is less and less likely each day uh as these cases uh increase. Um. You know, it we could continue to speculate about that. It's only July sixth, uh but I did not anticipate that uh bars would be closed by the governor. That feels like a regression. Uh, it is a regression. Um, in terms of economic activity, I think we could ask any bar owner and they would agree. Uh, so that's something to contemplate. You know, another another factor that I want to um to to raise is one of the things is related to the city's recreational activities and the opening of golf courses. We are still um, you you know, having to have social distancing and a lot of different workarounds and uh it we will, we are expecting a seven-figure gap in our golf uh activities throughout the course of twenty twenty, and that's provided that there isn't some change uh a worsening of the caseloads and so forth, and we don't have to perhaps regress and see golf courses closed. That's not our plan. Uh, we hope, we're very hopeful that that doesn't occur, but obviously we collect a lot of revenue at our recreation centers as well, and they are presently not closed, and we need to have this uh cautious pause in the reopening of them. So um, I'd ask you just to think about those. So for the moment, we have some things uh that we can do to remain solvent and, you know, continue to provide the services for sure. Be assured of that. Uh, but the the revised forecast is more pessimistic. It just is, uh logically, we can go back and um uh review our our notes and discussions from March, April, but in March, April, we had believed that uh again, cracking of the valve in May, or excuse me, in June, and then a lot of activity in July, and that's that's gonna be that is in doubt uh more and more each day. Um, and then also, uh do you consider our recreation activities as a as a revenue function as well? So um, again, I I may be speaking on uh source of macroeconomic uh type levels and maybe without a lot of specifics, but the key to focus on is uh re-forecast will be will be pessimistic, more pessimistic than the the recent one.
Okay, well, thank, I appreciate that. Um, and sorry to kind of grill down on that, but I think it's incredibly relevant to all of our policy decisions as a council and kind of um tempering what we can and can't do and and setting expectations with our community. Um, so thank you, and and obviously don't want to spread doom and gloom, um but I agree with my colleagues, you know, we want to make sure we have a a healthy um business community. Um, I I'm very nervous about um the ability of the business community to weather a a massive regression, and so want to watch this carefully um to to do everything we can to prevent transmission um and support the local businesses that are open. Um, but, you know, organizationally, we need to focus on how we we stay solvent. Um, I wanted to say thank you to your team. I really appreciate um how you're using the dollars, both for the the social recovery, um the outdoor classrooms, the mobile art city, the studio, the block party to go, the mobile library and the self-serve kiosks at Stanley Lake. I think um you know, there that we're social creatures, uh humans, and so it has been really hard for a lot of people to not have the ability to interact or have some of that entertainment, and so I appreciate us reimagining and being innovative of how we can use space and how we can um provide community services um to promote that. And then um to say I feel heard and delighted by the progress with the um with the housing grant program would be a complete understatement. Um, I'm so happy to hear that we've expanded it to include um folks in the higher AMI, because if you've um lost your job due to COVID nineteen, that's for most families. We're, there's a real lack of savings in this country right now because the cost of living is so high. Um, so I think this is really gonna assist people, and I think it really helps resiliency in the local economy because landlords, you know, they're not all huge corporations. My my neighbors and good friends are landlords, and they're right now facing this situation a- as well. Um, where they they can't get rent and they're trying to figure out how do they pay for their expenses because that's their revenue stream. So um, I I'm glad, I feel like this is a a really great way to invest those CARES dollars that will benefit the community. So thank you for listening. Thank you for being innovative and for the work you've done.
Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll I'll make these comments direct and brief. Uh. And I I don't want to go line by line on this, but I I do have some deep concerns um as far as expenditures, a half a million dollars for outdoor classrooms just in time for winter. I know there's a carryover effect on that, but it's direct effect money. Um, while we as carryover effect on that, but it's direct effect money. While we as elected officials for Westminster need to care for our residents in the utmost concern first, we also have to look at these federal dollars come from each and every one of us. And so at the end of the day, if, if we don't use every single dollar on something that is applicable to our current situation, then I think we are not being good stewards of everyone's dollars. Also, on the positive side, Denver Business Journal article last week from the Colorado Housing Apartment Association, it's not all doom and gloom. And we will see some of, some changes, I believe, as, as the unemployment $600 bonus moves away from that. But June rents in Colorado were paid at 95.4%, which compared to the same period the year before at 96%. So less than 1% difference. So we have some people that are being very resilient on that. And if we look at our economic opportunity, it's, we have both, we can control both sides of that. We can control our spending and we can control our income. And from an income standpoint, we have, as CFO Larry Dora mentioned, we get a significant income from our outdoor retail activities. Right now, our tee times are spread out at the golf courses. Then unless you're a pro player, you're never going to, never get anywhere near anyone else. And if we don't utilize Stanley Lake, the gem of this community, where we are spread out over acres and acres, then I think we've, we've lost an opportunity to help people's mental health and also help us from an economic standpoint. Thank you.
Mr. Demat.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, as you went through some of this stuff, some of the cost savings I'm, I'm wondering about are our events. So I know that we, you know, those aren't typically moneymakers. They cost us a lot of money between the Brew Fest and the Fall Fest and Latino Fest, Fourth of July Celebration. I'm curious if we have any idea of what kind of offsetting effect those events have by not having to host those this summer?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Demat. I appreciate that. Larry Dora speaking once again. You're, you're correct. The city will, is realizing some savings from not having to put on those events. We, we're just closing our, our June books, quite honestly, and we'll be looking at that a little bit more carefully. It's just been the second business day of the month with, with the city holiday on Thursday. So we'll be taking a closer look at that. What I wanted to expand on is that you're absolutely correct. While we have some direct revenues and some direct expenditures, and in many cases, the expenditures will exceed. However, it's the secondary effects. It's the folks who, you know, come to the Brew Fest and they'll buy that T-shirt, or they'll take their family out to dinner, or maybe they're coming from out of town and staying in a hotel. They're, they're spending sales tax dollars in the community and those are some of the secondary opportunities that we might be lost. I think that's what was kind of the bigger picture effect that we'll attempt to measure when we don't have softball tournaments and other, for example, even the Colorado Municipal League Conference, you know, folks would be going out and dining and, and maybe as they're out dining, they experience the retail environment in Westminster. So it's a secondary revenues that, you know, we can't quite directly measure, but we will feel because of the absence of those events. So as, but, but to answer your question, is we do our income and expense statement as a city for June, we'll report out on both the decrease in revenues, but also our savings in expenditures in our park rec and library activities on those events, sir. So we will, we will certainly do that.
A couple of other quick things. So like on the, the facilities, I imagine we have some other savings, just like we spoke earlier when we were talking about water, that individuals, such as I've seen in my own home, with everybody working at home, our electricity and our water bill or more. I imagine it's been the opposite in the, the city facilities. And again, I understand that there's kind of a ripple effect, but I imagine there's those savings. What, what about hourly employees? Do we have some sense of savings with hourly employees that work at like the rec centers that normally we would budget for, such as lifeguards and, you know, all the other different people who work at our facilities?
Oh yeah. Thank you for the question. You know, we've got some good data in our COVID Chronicle report that we published a couple of weeks ago. We have information both on the savings in our park rec and libraries department and, but also the revenues. So we have a little bit of that. And then we're published, we published a table in our COVID Chronicle as well, related to our non-benefited staff. We, we do have, we have not made any furloughs or layoffs, but as obviously as, as you point out, when a center closes, we don't have that front desk attendant. We're, we're inviting many, all of those workers to sign up for other temporary assignments. And you know about the work that we're doing with growing home and our economic development department has reached out and made phone calls to all of our businesses. And there are a number of other examples that are present. But we are tracking a savings because not all of those people have signed up. All those workers have signed up for interim assignments. So we do have a savings there. And I, I think that there's some pretty good detail in our COVID Chronicle report as well. And I'll, I'll hone in on that in a little more detail in my verbal description of that report in the future.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I guess I'm, I'm kind of concerned that we've changed tone. So, you know, in this short amount of time, this hasn't been going on, three months. But the last time we talked about it, we still seemed like we had a pretty positive feel on it. And I know that a lot of us had questioned whether or not we were going to have to go through some sort of furloughs, as we've seen our neighboring communities go through those unfortunate efforts to, to be able to stay solvent and continue to deliver services. I'm curious, and I know that you probably can't answer it. I do think it'll be interesting to see where June comes out and possibly July. There are still, even though there's an uptick, you know, I see things opening up. I see people getting back. The gyms are open again at some capacity, the, you know, restaurants, even though the bars closed back down. I have to imagine that we, we will see something. I know my daughter works in the Flat Iron Mall and she's been able to go back to work. And after being out of work for a couple of months, they, you know, they're starting to open some of those food services in the malls back up. So it'll be curious or interesting to see how we actually shake out. And I imagine that's some of what you're, you're waiting to see. I, I would kind of echo Counselor Seymour. I want to make sure, you know, you've laid out some good programs as far as where we're going to spend those cares dollars. But I, I am wanting to also make sure that, you know, we're not just spending cares dollars to make sure that we spend them. If some of that ends up going back because we didn't have a reasonable way to spend it, I would be in favor of that because I, I agree with Counselor Seymour, you know, we need to be stewards of those dollars.
Thank you, Counselor Demat. I appreciate that. And I, I just think that, that mirrors and fits with council's choices in terms of the distribution of funds across our four guiding principles. And less than 10% of the total cares dollars being in social, you know, probably strikes the appropriate balance that we're hoping to achieve. And while we do need to make sure that these funds are spent by the appropriate deadlines, we're doing these things very strategically, hopefully investing in some long-term assets and able to cope with the many needs across the entire community. And I can tell you that there was some thoughtful review that went into those choices under social recovery. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your comments and for your feedback. I think we, I, I really want to thank you for the additional time that you afforded us tonight. I know you've got other items on your agenda here, even still on the COVID update. So Mayor and Council, if there are any questions, we will just proceed with these programs and, and projects with this good feedback and the needs of the community.
Hello, Mr. Dora. Let me get a consensus from the council. They want you to proceed before you take off. Are you done with your items one, two, and three?
I'm, I'm done with one and two, sir. And we kind of transitioned a little bit. I think that Mr. John Hall, Economic Development Director, will probably have some comments under economic recovery update. I'll let you check with him after you can seek some consensus, sir.
All right. So we have two items that the staff is asking for guidance on, reminding that we are not voting, but we're looking for a consensus of whether or not this should proceed and come back to council as an action. First, I'll go to is the housing piece that Ms. Grafton presented. Is there anyone who has any concerns about this activity proceeding? All right, hearing none. Ms. Grafton, I think we have a consensus of the council to bring this one forward. Then the programs that were presented by Mr. Dora, do I have anyone who has concerns about this program proceeding as identified? All right, seeing none. Mr. Dora, you're okay with yours. Mr. Hall, would you like to go to economic recovery?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Hall, Economic Development Director. And I'm going to make my comments brief this evening. Much of what I'm going to, or would mention tonight, you will receive in our long-term recovery report tomorrow morning. But I do want to start at a high level with some employment information. On July 2nd, the Bureau, Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics released employment information for the month of June. And what it showed was an increase in employment of 4.8 million workers in the month of June, meaning the unemployment rate dropped from roughly 13.3% to 11.1%. And thought about another way, that's roughly one quarter of the jobs that we lost between March and April. The improvements in the labor markets were largely attributable to growth and economic activity that had been curtailed in March and April due to the coronavirus and, and the response to it. By sector, employment growth was highest in leisure and hospitality, retail trade, education and health services, manufacturing, and professional and business services. At the local level, we won't receive employment numbers for June until July 17th. So I'd ask you all to mark your calendars, look for local employment figures for the state and counties and for the city of Westminster on July 17th. But we have been running one to two points lower in our unemployment rate than the national average. So I would fully expect that when those July numbers, excuse me, when the, on July 17th, when the June numbers are issued, that we will see local unemployment rates at the state level to be somewhere around 9% and in Westminster to be roughly about 10%. Those are both improvements over our May figures. The challenge with the unemployment numbers has been discussed quite a bit tonight. While at the federal level, we're adding jobs in aggregate, it's very uneven across states as different states have created different responses to the coronavirus. The same is true within the state of Colorado. We have been uneven over time as public health orders have changed and been adjusted. In the city of Westminster, we continue to dedicate a great deal of effort and resources to supporting our local businesses. All of you are familiar with our initial Westminster Rise or Westy Rise Business Grant Program. That program is now closed. We've moved into the Westy Rise and Dine Program, which is a restaurant-focused program. We've had 51 applications and expended approximately $300,000. We've also been working on the temporary expansion of, of food and beverage service areas. And while that started very slowly, we are seeing better traction over the last couple of weeks as restaurants figure out how to adjust to the existing public health orders and how to regain their footing in the current climate. We've also made progress in our restaurant and food security project. And we've identified a nonprofit that will be able to pursue an agreement with and coordinate with restaurants and distribute meals to seniors and at-risk populations throughout Westminster. We're targeting a start date for that program of the 27th. We distributed 30,000 face coverings to 164 businesses. So we've been making progress on that front as well. We continue to partner with the Westminster Chamber on the Shop Local campaign. We are partnering with Adams County on the Small Business Stabilization Program that was launched on June 22nd. And as Ms. Grafton indicated earlier this evening, we are moving forward with housing assistance programs, including the program she described tonight, and the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program with Adams County. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Council? All right, Mr. Frankel, I think we're moving to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Dave Frankel, the City Attorney, providing you with your monthly emergency declaration update. We are now approaching the end of our fourth month since the emergency declaration for the city of Westminster went into effect. And during that time, the city has adopted certain regulations pursuant to the state of emergency. As councils aware, there was Resolution 17A regarding face coverings and requiring them wearing a face coverings. Council also approved a resolution the same night to initiate a COVID-19 outreach plan for public education on health risks. The next regulation that was issued by the city pursuant to the emergency declaration was the City Manager's Emergency Directive regarding restaurants and outdoor dining, as well as liquor license renewals in an effort to streamline the process of getting our businesses reopened. And as Mr. Hall just indicated, the temporarily expanded areas of food and beverage service program continues in effect. And as Mr. Hall indicated, is continuing to gain traction with new applications received nearly each time. There's an update that I see, including today, I believe there were four new applications received to participate in that program. So pursuant to the emergency declaration, we have relaxed certain code requirements which apply to outdoor food and beverage services for restaurants so that they can expand their seating areas into outside areas where they can serve more customers. Also, part of that program is to expand their liquor licenses, insofar as the city has a concurrent jurisdiction over liquor license renewals and expansions, along with the state. So it's my understanding that that also continues in effect and that restaurants, as they apply for expanded food and beverage service areas, are also taking advantage of expansion of their liquor license for their businesses. The other thing to point out, that continuing emergency declaration for our city allows for these remote meetings to be held each Monday night for city council to meet remotely. And I know there was a question earlier in the meeting relative to options for future meetings, as for in-person, face-to-face meetings. And police staff will definitely research options that are available to city council pursuant to, if it was Councilor Vols's question earlier. Finally, the emergency declaration facilitates our city receiving FEMA emergency funding reimbursement. And that declaration does continue in effect, obviously. And as the city incurs expenditures that are not necessarily cares act reimbursable, we, and it's our hope that FEMA emergency funding will be available to provide partial reimbursement for the city's expenses under the emergency declaration. So with that, I would ask if you have any questions.
Mr. Seymour, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not necessarily directly related to the order, but City Attorney Frankel brought this up and I, I mismentioned this when. but City Attorney Frankel brought this up, and I mismentioned this when we were talking about the expansion of liquor licenses. And I wanted to make a comment that what an outstanding job our city clerk's office has been doing with these expansions of seating spaces and for the liquor licenses. I have heard from members of the business community how quickly that process was going and the control on our part. And especially in relation to the state, because it's a double filing that has to be made. And I'm so very glad that the Liquor Enforcement Division, because their revenues were down, decided not to increase their fees for liquor filings on July 1st. So very glad to hear that, that the state decided to make a good decision from that standpoint and that our staff is doing outstanding job in the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Other comments or questions or follow-up to Mr. Frankel's report? Mr. Tripp, is there anything else on the COVID updates that you have at this time?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, Council, let's go back to earlier start of the discussion on the presentations. This is the proposed charter amendments. Mr. Demott, I'm going to start back with you. That's where your comments were starting.
Mr. Mayor, I think Counselor Smith might have had a question for Mr. Frankel, looking at the chat.
Ms. Smith, is your question to Mr. Frankel or is this back to the other item?
No, it's to Mr. Frankel. Mr. Frankel, if we were to meet, and I believe that we're planning to meet for our strategic planning in, at the end of July, so this month, would that automatically constitute us into holding our study sessions and council meetings in person come August?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Smith. So my understanding, the question is having the council retreat July, is it 23rd, 24th? In that vicinity on a weekend to discuss what team building, strategic planning, those sorts of agenda items. Would that commit or compel future meetings to be conducted in person? No, I don't think that it would. I believe that council's strategic planning retreat and governance discussions can be held in compliance with local health department orders and with the state CDPHE guidance. I expect that the layout of the space that you would be occupying would be such that it would be conducive to social distancing and ensuring that face coverings would be worn as needed. But I believe that that retreat can happen, and that is a separate question for a council meeting, in that council meetings require, obviously, an aspect of live broadcast, recording the proceedings, having in-person opportunities potentially for citizens. So I think it's a little more complicated to reconvene, but I do expect city staff researching options for city council's consideration so that you can meet face-to-face on Monday nights in the future. But I do think it's a separate analysis, separate evaluation, what would be required to make that happen.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, back to you, Mr. Demott, in your comments and regarding the charter potential.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would just put my preference that we put it on the ballot. I haven't heard anything that really drastically changes my mind for the amount of money that we've been told that it takes. It seems that the ballot language is already drafted. I'm personally happy with it because I think through our discussions over the last eight months, it was really to call the question, is there a desire in the city to have people or to have wards and districts looked at, ward or districts looked at in some aspect? So my preference would be to let the people answer that question.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too concur with Counselor Demott. This is a question to bring forward to our residents. We've been building up to this, I believe, even before our discussion. In May, we heard it during the election cycle this last year. And we've now been heard because the light's been shined on it from more and more residents. I think it's a situation where it's important for us to continue to do the business of the city and, more importantly, to do the business of the people. And this is a critical question to bring before them. And if not now, when? Thank you.
Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when I was reading through this, I see two versions of what's to be put on the ballot, and they say very different things. And so I guess my concern is, right now, which one of these would we put on the ballot? And I have to tell you, I'm still really concerned about the finances. Listening to the report and hearing that we are already $60 million, pretty much at a loss, I'm questioning whether this is the right time to put a ballot issue on, to propose a ballot issue that is going to cost the city money. I'm not sure this is a time to be spending as much as it is a time to approach with with I'm sorry, I'm losing my speakers.
Ms. Scully, we lost your voice.
Did Catherine drop off?
We're waiting to see where she's at. She's there, but I just can't hear her.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you. Please go ahead, continue.
All right, I'm sorry, my speakers gave out. So I'm concerned that we're responding inappropriately during a time when things are just truly uncertain. We don't know where we will be. We do know that this is still first wave of COVID. We have not hit the second wave. We don't know what our year-end is going to look like. There is unlikely going to be federal funding that's going to be able to help us out coming in the future. That said, I want it made very, very clear that I am not against putting a ballot issue forth that proposes wards. I think it's a great idea. I just don't think the timing is now. But I would be willing to consider doing a vote now to do it with a delayed action of proposing it for the 2021 election. I don't think that would delay us in being able to still, being able to go to the voters in 2022 with a proposed ward system, and I think we could put it into effect by 2023. That is what I would prefer. I don't know that at this point I can get to where I can approve a ballot initiative for 2020 when we are just so uncertain of our situation. And I want to be as positive as Counselor Seymour in thinking that we are going to, that things are looking up and that we're living through it and that this is all normal as far as a pandemic goes. But there are other issues. There's also the police bill that we have to try and work through and figure out what that's going to cost us. And we already know that initially, that's going to cost us about $1 million just to get the cameras that we are now being required by the law to provide to our police. So to me, there's just too many financial questions, but I would be willing to consider voting to, yes, put it on a ballot, not the 2020 ballot, but the 2021 ballot, and then having a task force be able to work from 2021 to 2022 to develop, if it's passed by the voters, to develop a ward system, and then we could implement in 2023. And additionally, that would give us time to also review the census, which will be out supposedly. I looked it up tonight. It should be out by April of next year. So that would give us time to also look at the census and look at how our city has grown and how the population has changed, to do some education on what going to a ward system would mean, giving us time to find that extra money that we're going to need to put it on the ballot. If this is a two-step process, we are looking at not $60,000, but $120,000 because it's two ballot issues we're having to put onto a ballot. And each time we put one on, it's $60,000. So that is my opinion. That is my movement. I would welcome feedback.
Before I come back to those who've already talked, I'm going to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to put in comments. Anyone that has not had an opportunity to speak on this that wishes to? Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate my colleagues indulging me and letting me go back to the COVID report first before we went into this discussion. And I have to tell you, having three members of the body completely misremember or have a different memory, rather, of our May 4th meeting than I did, really got me wondering if I was not clear in that meeting about the direction I was giving staff. So during the bio break, I actually went back and watched our May 4th meeting. And if anyone wants to revisit my comments, they start at hour and 28. I specifically talk about my concerns, my hesitation being concerns about fiscal irresponsibility due to the pandemic and the financial situation of the city and being unsure if this was the right time to invest in really a monumental change in how we govern and investing that amount of staff time and energy when we were, you know, unsure if we were going to be able to continue to provide core services. So thank you for that time, and I'm going to actually, after I speak, email out the meeting because apparently there's been a, it's interesting what different members hear and what they cling to. I have a couple of questions for staff. First and foremost, the staff memo does say $60,000. But the way I read that, that is simply the cost for coordinating the election between the two counties. Is that correct?
Mr. Tripp?
I don't know who wants to answer that.
I think, as long as these questions are technical, just I'll turn to Chris or Michelle, Dave Frankel, where he can support, but I think this is probably Chris or Michelle.
Mayor Protem Sykes, this is Chris Lindsay. Yes, you are correct. That's just the cost of the fall coordinated election, an approximate cost.
Okay, and if, let's contemplate, our community members said, yes, we would like to explore this. My understanding, to do this and to do this well, because we're fundamentally changing our city charter. So we're not going to want to just let some, you know, to let it be divided up by maybe some stakeholders from within the community, but we'll really want to look at best practices. We would want to secure a consultant, have a facilitator. I think you detailed a couple of things. And we were unable to get an estimate of what that would cost because there wasn't a similar city who's done it in Colorado recently. Is that accurate?
That is correct. We've identified a facilitator, significant and specialized legal counsel and consultant or more with expertise in drawing ward boundaries.
So with that being said, would you, it's hard for us as a council to evaluate, is this a big lift or a little lift with the staff report we were given? I'm imagining, and perhaps cynically and incorrectly, that this would be a pretty large lift. That would take a lot of both staff time and city resources to do well. And what, is that a fair assumption or am I, am I kind of projecting something that is not the case?
Mayor Protem Sykes, I believe this would be a large lift in terms of financial resources and staff resources.
Okay, but you can't give me an estimated dollar amount?
That's correct.
So that makes it very difficult to evaluate. Because similar to Counselor Scully, I'm not against the idea of asking our residents whether or not they'd like to look at wards and districts. It is, you know, weighing, the world has changed this year. So in addition to a pandemic, we have sweeping reform in public safety that's going to, at the very least, have the city investing in body cameras. And I heard on this, last time we had a meeting, I heard Counselor Smith, myself, the city manager and the police chief saying, probably want to adopt those body cameras sooner than later. So that's a cost that's coming at us pretty quickly in addition to not understanding the other fiscal implications of that law. I've received a lot more emails from community members asking for us to invest in the community to try, for programs like our Wellness Courts, things that complement the police department, so the police department's not having to wear a million hats, but we're having the appropriate response to the appropriate need. I've heard that loud and clear. How do we help the community grow and help equity through that lens? And then just the financial health of our organization, not knowing where our revenues are going to be. So I guess looking at all of this that's going on and looking at this big lift, I still am left with that concern about bringing this to the residents' attention. They want to go through it, especially because that A is so vague. It doesn't even say the word wards or districts in it. It's just, you know, do you believe in, and let's look in how to do best practices in government. That we'd have a lot of different people feeling they got a mandate without any real clear direction for us on how to go. So if we're going to go forward with this, I have a strong preference for B because I think we should be clear about what we're asking. But I still do have some hesitations about the timing. Not the merit of wards and districts, but the timing, because even with a recent editorial and a call to action, I've maybe gotten 10, 12, and I think that's being generous, folks reach out to me asking for wards and districts. It doesn't feel like this is a widespread push. That said, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. It's not saying that it's not something that perhaps our residents want, and we can let them tell us at the ballot that I think we need to make sure they know what they're asking and they understand the opportunity costs and the economic situation that we're in right now. And so I guess, I don't know how that all looks, but if we were to do option B, I would want to amend some of the wording because I think it, it still is not clear enough. I would prefer it to say, you know, shall the city of, council of the city of Westminster contract with a consultant to help with the creation of a commission or to, to create a commission? I'd like it to talk about, rather than to pursue wards and districts, to research, evaluate. And then finally, it talks about a transmission and implementation plan by 2022, but that seems like a false promise. It could say to provide to city council to determine if they want to refer it to the ballot in 2022 because this doesn't, in and of itself, the way I'm reading it, unless I'm wrong, doesn't allow, it is not the charter change. It's giving us the information then to refer to the ballot for a charter change. Right? It's like step one of three steps. But it's written as though it will be implemented. So I feel like that, I'm just a little bit worried about how, if the voters voted on this, how it would actually be carried out, and I think we should be a lot more clear and accurate in that. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. I think I've, I think I've got your concerns.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I'd like to have a real discussion with my colleagues on this. I'd rather they didn't kind of boil down concerns to something of just not hearing it from residents. That has never been, that I'm not saying residents may not want to have their voice in this. I'm saying, is this a priority right now with everything else going on? It just, I think we need to look at the big picture of all of the things the city is facing it, and is this the right time to do this? Counselor Seymour said, if now, if not now, when? Perhaps when we have a better idea of what the new normal is. You know, I'm not You know, I'm not, I'm not bound to that, but I, that's right now, I, that's exactly the question I'm wrestling with. Is now the right time? I speed the floor.
Ms. Smith, I have you up next, and then Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is kind of precarious how we hear things when they're first said. Say, I'm not quite sure if I remember saying body cameras sooner rather than later. Maybe looking at what we need to do with the bill and figuring that out logistically. But I also use my bio break to go back and listen to the study session that we had on May 4th. And it's my understanding, yes, Mayor Protem, that you had mentioned that you thought about the timing of all of this coming down. But it was very clear that there also wasn't a polling from staff or council that, from my understanding, made you concerned as far as why you wouldn't want to move this forward. And I think a part of that then was my thought as far as this is our polling. This is our chance, this is our opportunity to ask our residents whether or not that this would be something of importance to them to have on the ballot this year. I think we have a, a prime opportunity with a presidential election coming up, to have it on a ballot. We'll have more turnout than, than next year. We all know, we've all run for getting our names on the ballot. And so I think it is prime time to be looking at this. I understand from a, I, I totally hear what you're saying about the fiscal responsibility part of this. But if we're look, truly looking at a totality cost of getting just on the ballot, just to ask a question of $60,000 compared to our 250-plus million dollars that we have as a budget, I think that we can use that to hear the voice of the people. I think that that's wisely spent on making sure that we are speaking on behalf of what our voters want. We're clearly on opposite ends of, of this spectrum right here. But I ask yourselves, ask yourselves why you chose Westminster and the areas that you're living in. The areas, I grew up in Jefferson County. It looks and feels a little bit different than Adams County. I live now in Adams County. It's because we're in two different counties. I grew up in a Jefferson County school system, completely different than an Adams County school system, which we have different in Westminster. We're very unique in who we are as a city, which is, which has many facets to it, pros and cons. But I think this is an opportunity to really unite Westminster and look at how we can use those facets. And we talk about inclusivity all the time. So why not use that as a prime example to say sections of Westminster to be in wards or districts, to have proper representation? Because I tell you what, when I was campaigning last year, and even the year prior, I was in Jefferson County. I grew up with, with the Rocky Mountain Airport. There wasn't as many air traffic controls going on growing up. Now, within the last five years, it's picked up. And I clearly saw that when I was campaigning. I don't hear it as much over in Adams County. Now, yes, everyone, we can use that. We can be the vessel to counsel and use that as an entire body. And there's pros and cons to wards and districts. But because we're so polarized on where we're at with this, I really feel that this is a good opportunity then, to then let it rest with our residents. Let it rest with their thoughts on, on how we should develop and, and follow in the future for how Westminster is. And I think, like I said, the, the financials, I, I clearly understand where you're at. You know, my employer, they just came out with a press release, RTD came out with a press release saying that their financials are looking better than originally projected. However, they have nine days of furlough for salaried employees. Does that help financials? Yes. But their projections on financials, which I believe it's the second largest budget in Colorado, are better than projected. And so, so not looking at the dire gloom of this, I think, again, going back to my thoughts of providing our core services, listening to our residents, that's all who we are as elected officials. I think that this is a prime example and time to be asking. And I, I know it's kind of cliche now, it's been said a lot, but if not now, when? If, if COVID happened next year or, or last year, would, truly ask yourself, would you have put it on the ballot this year? If we were talking about this last year. If we talk about this next year, what happens if something else comes up? That is a very big concern as far as, yes, we, we've heard and we've seen emails come through. But like I said, let's not, let's not make it our voice, let's make it their voice.
Mr. Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate all my comments from all of my colleagues previously. And I'll try to be brief because we probably even have some more discussion on this. There is a really strong, and what we heard earlier tonight from staff, there's a really strong argument for fiscal responsibility. I joined this council as somebody who is a fiscally responsible counselor. So I am not going to abandon that. So there is a strong argument for that. But I think the stronger argument is, at this time during this crisis, we also have a police department, we need a support. And I hear that there's a lot of support for the police department. Well, this is what we need to be doing now. So the question of priorities, what are the priorities of this staff? What are the priorities of this council? Do we want to support our police officers at this time when we hear it from all kinds of sides of our community? They're looking to us for leadership. We want to support our police. And we're in the middle of a pandemic, and people want public health and they want public safety. I think those are priorities for us and for our staff right now. So when the question is, if not now, when, you're, we're in the middle of a worldwide pandemic. So I think that seems a little cliched to me. I don't appreciate that, that that's the, the argument that, well, if not now, when? I don't agree with that. We have so much uncertainty that we're dealing with right now. We're weighing priorities of all different kinds. I totally, well, and as a matter of fact, Counselor Seymour just mentioned earlier how busy and how much, how much quickly, how much quicker the city clerk's office has been getting permits out and license out for our businesses. That's what they should be doing. Now we're going to take the clerk's office, they know we need to do a ballot initiative. We need to work with both counties and the, there are issues that are priorities for our community right now, our small businesses, our police office, our public health and our safety. I think we need to pick our priorities. And for me, the priority is definitely those things. A ballot initiative, I, it's something I support. I support wards and districts. I've said that the entire time I've been on council. It's a question of timing. And what are our priorities and what do we do in leadership of those priorities? And so for me, I would support Counselor Scully's suggestion to put it on a ballot and let's just say we're going to do it. We'll do it in 2021. I, we have a turnaround time of, I think our report says something like August 10th. Well, I know that, I look at the, at the wording of what we have, and no offense to you, I totally honor and respect everyone for their work on that. But the wording is basically, I think, number A is, you know, our puppy's cute. Or, you know, I mean, of course they are. Everyone's going to say, yes. No, we need to educate the public, and we need them to know what it is we're working on here. So, and what the wording is needs to reflect that, the, all sides of the issue. So I don't want to just throw this out there at this time during a pandemic, our police department needs us and they need our leadership and within the community. I would say we need to move forward with this because it is something, and we do want to hear from the public. I have always said that. I've never maintained otherwise. And I believe that we should shoot for 2021 for a ballot initiative like this. So thank you for listening, and that's my simple thoughts on this. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go back to those who had put in a second time to talk. I've got Mr. Demott first, Mr. Seymour second, and then Ms. Sykes third.
I've, I'm really interested in some of the comments that you all have made. And I think it's, it's, it's very interesting since it took an act of God to post a letter of support for our police department publicly last week when I was on vacation. So I'll, I'll be damned if I sit here and I listen to this, that this somehow is about the difference between support for the police department or support for the citizens. I don't even understand how that got into the discussion. I spent the last three years fighting for a rifle program for something our police department wanted. Where time after time after time, we were, I was told, no, we're going to go after grants instead of just putting it in the general fund. So, you know, you'll have to excuse me, but I take serious exception to that. If you guys want to talk about exception to things you take. The fact of the matter is, the city south of 104th, they don't have representation. There's not a US senator down there. There's not a state representative down there. There's not a county commissioner down there. This is something I've heard over three different campaigns. And I'm, I am absolutely certain that next year, when I go hit doors to run for reelection, that I'll hear it again. I don't understand how $60,000 all of a sudden is make or break us when two months ago, less than two months ago, I voted against money to go to some CU-funded thing where we were going to do research that's going to help us with COVID. I, I, I am just aghast at what I'm hearing tonight. I appreciate the fact that you guys want to be fiscally responsible. I think I have a pretty good record of fiscal responsibility in my three years on this council. However, this is something that I've been consistently asked for. I've been consistently asked for in this time of pandemic. And, and I just don't, don't get where you're all coming from. If you don't want to do it, fine, don't do it. But don't, don't put this as some sort of thing between supporting the police department or not supporting it. I absolutely take exception to that.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize to my colleagues because I did not make a, a preference clear between version A and version B. And I, I believe that version B sets out the what and the when, and then works on the part of the how. We can make ballot language as complex as we'd like, or make it as simple as possible so that there is also some flexibility in there and hope for some of our residents. I too am concerned that this, this is, we are not in a situation of all or nothing on our budget. So that, that is, and if my comment personally offended someone, then, then I do apologize. But I want to make it clear that we have a multifaceted budget. We have the opportunity to support our frontline people. And we have the opportunity to keep our public works running so that we can provide those essential services to our residents. But we are not in a situation of all or nothing. That situation could be created if we continue to not look at the metrics and the resulting metrics of those as, as this disease changes and our care and treatment for this disease changes. But that is up to higher elected officials that we need to help influence ourselves. So I, I think it's important that we not become myopic in our budgeting. I think it's important that we can support many facets of, of our city. And, and even in the sense of continuing to support our recreational opportunities along with everything else. Because there is a cost associated with that too, but it's for a positive for our residents. And I think we can take that balanced approach and move forward. I am very fiscally conservative. I have stated my concern about certain spending on many items already in my short time on council, and will continue to do so. So I, I, I believe I would like to put my preference on the table for version B moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to ask staff a question again based off of Counselor Seymour's last comment. So, and I think that, that Counselor Seymour has a good point. We're obviously constantly in a budget. We have multiple things that we're doing in the city. It's, it's never all or nothing. We have to do multiple programs. But I had asked a question about, do we contemplate that this would be both a significant lift for staff capacity and for budget that may, and, and so I want to clarify that, that may impact our ability to provide other programming to the city. We have finite dollars. So, you know, it's, it, it is really hard for us to evaluate this right now without having an estimate of how much a consultant contract would cost, how much legal assistance would cost, how much a facilitator would cost. So I am going, I may be making this a bigger deal than it is because I'm truly, you know, I, I'm kind of surmising. And, and I think it would be fair of my colleagues to say I'm, you know, counting the chickens before they're hatched because that is the second phase. The, the $60,000 is the first phase, which would be to put it on, on the ballot. Presuming it passes, that is where I think we, we need to be, if it, they say yes, and we should assume they'd say yes, can we afford to do what we've just committed to? And so that is where I'm at. If in that second phase, could we actually, do we have the capacity for that? And I don't know if staff has an answer to that, but if, if you can give me a little bit more understanding of how impactful you think this is, that would help.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Sykes, this is Chris Lindsay again. I, I would say this, if this passes and the city sets up an independent commission, I think it would represent a fairly significant diversion of staff time and resources at a time when the city is, is spending those efforts on financial recovery and helping our community recover and grow, dealing with a number of the other items that have been raised this evening, the police reform mandates and others. And I, I think there's a pretty wide range of what the cost could be based on council choices. I, I think this could be very costly.
So I'm going to, thank you for that information. I'm going to disagree with my colleague, Counselor Smith, when she said this is such a polarized issue. Because I don't feel like, of all the issues that we have disagreed with as a council, I, I don't actually feel this is that polarized. I have heard from almost every single member of council, you know, some desire to find out if a community would like to move towards in districts. I'm saying that right now. I, I'm not against putting this question to the, to the voters at some point. Is now the time? And if the answer to that question is yes, now is the time, or as Counselor Scully said, next year is the time, I just want to make sure that we're really clear with our residents, all of the costs, what does it mean, right? So this is a fundamentally, we haven't changed our charter fundamentally since 1958, right? So this is something we do very rarely. It needs to be done with a high duty of, or a high level of care and a high level of thought. I think that that, you know, I will never, ever have to run in a ward and district, right? I, I'm, I'm already run twice for council. It's not going to affect me personally. But I do feel a very heightened sense of responsibility to make sure I leave the institution of Westminster government better than I found it. And so I just want to make sure if we do this, we do this with thought and intention and care and set up future generations in this community to have governance that works. That, that's a huge responsibility that we all are considering right now. And so if we bring this question to the table, I think the magnitude of what we're really asking needs to be clear. And we need to have a path of how we would, how that evaluation would go down. Gerrymandering, in my opinion, is an absolute cancer on democracy. It is an absolute cancer on representation. And so while having districts can look on the surface like it increases geographical representation and diversity of representation, it can actually be used for the opposite effect. And so I want us to be thoughtful, not just in how we would implement it initially, but how it would succeed, you know, how would it get reapportioned year after year so that we're making sure we're, we're fairly and equitably dividing up the city? we're making sure we're, we're fairly and equitably dividing up the city, not based off of anyone's special interests, but really based off of wanting to make sure there are equitable districts. So not against it, I just think it, I think it's a big list and we should be clear to the voters what we're asking and what the opportunity costs are. And that's why I know Counselor Seymour was saying we could get as detailed as we want in the question. I actually think we need to be very clear. This is what we're asking specifically because if they don't know there's a cost associated with it, that, that may change their answer. You're not the only fiscal steward. I think a lot of residents are pretty cautious about how government dollars are spent, especially when we may be on the brink of a financial crisis. So I just, I actually think there's a lot of agreement. I think there's a lot of people who want to make hay out of this too and are using this instead of looking at how do we best serve the city right now as to how do they stand out and show that they're the voice of the people. Everyone here wants to be the voice of the people. We all want to be good stewards. We're trying to figure out how to do that responsibly.
Mayor Protim, sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could address a couple of points that were brought up by Mayor Protim sites. First of all, and our policy and budget director, Chris Lindsay, has already addressed this to some degree regarding the workload or lift on the part of staff. And it is also true that we don't have a Colorado example necessarily in the last decade or more to turn to. However, I do want to offer you my personal experience, having gone through a very lengthy redistrict, or rather, ward creation and then redistricting process in Austin, Texas back in 2012, when I was the Assistant Director of Elections for Travis County. They put forth two charter amendment ballot questions that were very specific and stated, shall the city charter of Austin be changed to allow for the creation of single member districts? And they offered two different, two different options. One of those was 10 at-large districts and an at, I'm sorry, 10 single member districts and one at-large mayor. The other one, I believe, was eight single member districts, two at-large and an at-large mayor. So those two questions were placed on the ballot for November of 2012. They were very clear what those two options were. And it was decided that whichever of those ballot questions garnered the most votes would be the plan that moved forward with an independent commission of citizens. Ultimately, the 10 single member districts with one at-large mayor is what won. And then it, basically, the city of Austin went through a very lengthy process with that commission. They did, in fact, have to hire outside legal counsel with this very specific specialty. Incidentally, and this is just anecdotally, at first they actually had trouble finding enough citizens and people they thought were qualified to serve on that commission and had to put out more than one call for volunteers to serve on it. Over the next year or so, there were multiple maps created both by this commission as well as many independent citizen groups, advocacy groups, et cetera. And ultimately, they put the maps on the ballot in 2014 and the first time that those districts and the candidates who filed to represent those districts were elected the following year in 2015. So just getting those two proposed charter amendment questions on the ballot in 2012 also had, of course, months of work and workshopping before they arrived at the two choices of either 10-1 or 8-2-1. So it was a very lengthy process. I will grant you, that is a much larger city and it's very hard to draw, you know, parallels with our city, but that is really the only process I could point to, to you, to give you any kind of information on what this might look like. We have researched Colorado and as previously stated, there's nothing recent that we can turn to in terms of a model. So it really would be starting from scratch. In terms of getting a question on the ballot, that is not where the heavy lift is incurred. Getting the question on the ballot is perhaps the easiest part, but I would also agree that this is not asking the voters to change our charter and create wards. That's not what this language says. If city council wanted to direct us to change that language, that would have to be written differently and I don't want to go into all the legal, so let Mr. Frankel weigh in there if he'd like to, but that is what I can offer you. And, and I do believe, even though we are not the same size as the city of Austin by any stretch of the imagination, I do believe it would be a very lengthy process. I think we would be in for a long haul and I would say that, you know, I would share your concern whether or not we could or should promise that we could get it done by 2022.
And this is Dave Frankel. Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate your sharing, your experience related to this. I would say yes to the earlier question that was asked, whether this is more than a one-step process. It is a question to the voters whenever it's posted to establish a commission. That question ideally is clear and understandable as to what it means and what it will affect. But the creation of a commission is very different from changing the city charter. So I would recommend that that commission, if it is created, have time to engage in necessary public outreach to include citizens' comments, to take into consideration the views of our residents. And I don't know that a timeframe of implementation is going to be as rapid as perhaps the draft version B is worded right now. Because if the commission were to make that recommendation, that council in the future put up a charter amendment, obviously that would go on to an election and voters would be asked whether the charter amendment is acceptable. If, if they chose to amend the charter, then obviously, Michelle Parker's experience, I have no reason to dispute that that would be our process locally, honestly. We would need to then implement and implementation of a ward system would take some level of expertise and you would want to leave time for the implementation. So, so my, my basic suggestion is if there's to be a question, we should all be comfortable that it's quite clear as to what this, this first round question means and what effect it would have if passed.
All right, let me finish up with the council. Mr. Bowles, I still had you for a second question or comments.
Probably more comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. And I first, I would apologize if my comments offended any of my colleagues. Of course, I admire and, and respect all of my colleagues, so I apologize if anything I said offended anyone. I agree with what Mayor Protim cites, and I think our city clerk addressed this as well, you know, capacity. And that we need to get to a very specific, I, I, what we have, I don't think is specific enough. I think we do need something more specific. I think the language needs to be much more detailed than what we are looking at with points A and point B. But my point is, we're spending considerable time, and this is just the very tip of the iceberg. That's, I guess, what I was trying to address earlier, which is timing and our priorities. What priorities do we have? And what are, as a city, what are our priorities? I will say again, and I've said it probably every time we've talked about this, I support a ballot initiative to ask people in Westminster, our residents, do they support, do they want wards and districts? I support that. My question is capacity to staff and council during this time, is this the right time to do it? I guess that's been my question all along and then the fiscal, the fiscal portion of it, which is the long-term costs associated once we go down that path. So we better be darn sure that we know we've got it there. I do not want to block this ballot question. I think that, I, I think timing is everything and I think timing may not be right on this. Again, I apologize if my earlier comments upset anybody, it seems like it did, so I apologize. I do want to correct the record, however. I've heard many times, and I've gotten emails and I've gotten text messages from a lot of people, and I've seen a lot of social media that says, we have no one, no counselors who live below 104th Avenue. Well, that's simply not true. I live below 104th. So I've heard this over and over and I'm like, you know, I'm sorry. And before me, Mayor Protim, Maria de Canberra, lived below 104th Avenue. So I just want to correct the record on that because I've heard it a lot. I've heard from a lot of my, my residents and, and my neighbors would be offended because we all live below 104th, but thank you very much.
All right. At this point, every member of the council, with my self exception for now, has had at least two opportunities to talk. Well, some of the thing I've heard from comments was, some people believe that they are not having representation in some parts of the city, regardless of where it's at. Well, I would remind the council that every member of this council is elected at large and you represent the entire city. So if you don't think you're representing a portion of the city, then I suggest you get on board and start representing them. The question that came up that started a lot of this email that we've gotten over the last two days is based upon a column written by a former city employee last week. I have not seen an outpouring of a large amount of people. I have seen approximately 10 emails total that talk about this subject and they're not all the same. But I have not seen an outcry from the citizens that says, this is something that we think we've got to have. Have there been some? Yes, but a very, very small minority of people have said this is an issue for them. We have not seen that in our surveys that they brought this up. And I'm not in a position at this point to say this is more important than what else we're doing. The staff position hasn't changed from when we first discussed this. This is a big load. And right now, in my opinion, I think if we have a lot of other stuff on our plate about the survival of this city, then whether or not we go out and start looking to see if we can change the city's makeup. I will tell people very pointedly, I represent the entire city. I don't represent one portion of the city. And I hope that every council member that's on this phone call can say the same thing. If somebody wants to be elected from a portion of the city, get on the ballot and run. If you can't get elected, that's either you said that you've not been qualified by the electorate or the people don't find you qualified for what you're applying for. I think it's time to bring this conversation to an end and we can find one of two things. We have a proposal from Counselor Scully to make a commitment to put this on the ballot in 2021. Is there any support for that?
It seems to me that, that we don't even know what language we would support. So I'm not sure that I'm willing to make a motion on something, some hypothetical 2021 ballot measure. You'd have to come back with something more substantial. And I agree, everybody on this call represents the whole city and I don't think that that's, that's the point at all. The point is that certain areas don't have people because some of it could be financial and that is something that even Mayor Protim cites in a, in a forum during the last campaign pointed out the fact. So part of it is, is about equability of the city. It's not about the, the members of the city, which I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I think everybody on here tries their best to support the entire city. But I'd have to know a little bit more about what that ballot language is. My preference would still be to have something on the ballot this year, but before I could support that, I'd have to know what it was.
All right, Mr. Bowles. You're on mute, Mr. Phil Bowles.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I, yeah, good. Okay, thank you. I would support Counselor Scully's move to put it to 2021. I think we need to tighten the language and we can do that by then. Thank you.
Ms. Scully.
I think Counselor Demont for his, his candidness and his comment, I think that's brilliant. So I would support putting this on the ballot in 2021. I support saying it tonight, but that gives us time to work on that language, to really fine tune it. I think it's the responsible thing to do and so, so I stand in support of that.
At this point, I have two people who have expressed a desire to put this on the ballot in 2021. Do I have anybody else?
I would be fine putting it on the ballot in 2021 with more clear language. My holdup, whether it's 2020 or 2021, truly is making sure the voters are aware of what they would be voting and what that impact would be for the city. I think by doing it in 2021, that gives us enough time to craft that language, but also to know what the impacts of COVID would be. And I think that will be helpful for the voters as well. So that, that's my feeling. Whether it's 2020 or 2021, no, I really do need to have much more clear ballot language.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really in support of getting this on this year's ballot, but I, I'm seeing that this is not going that way. Like Counselor Demont, I don't even know what we would be voting on as far as language. The, the option B is, to me, seem completely different. It's not an advisory question, it's an actual to-do question. And so I need to know exactly what I'd be putting forward as far as getting it on a 2021 ballot. But if we are moving to approve a 2021 initiative to get it on the ballot, you can be sure that I will be holding all of my colleagues accountable, that it will be happening in 2021. And if we have another COVID uptick or another virus come forward or something else, I'm going to go back to this conversation and say that I'm holding us all accountable, that it will be on a 2021 ballot.
So let me clarify, Ms. Smith, are you supporting a 2021 ballot question?
I'm supporting a this year question, but if it has to be, I will defer to what the majority of council decides. But if it has to be 2021, then so be it, we'll be at 2021. But I need to see the language before I approve it for getting back on the ballot.
Okay. Mr. Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to go back and add one thing to my comments. I still would prefer this year, but if you're not going to do it this year, then I will support what Counselor Scully is proposing, just so it gets done. But then I, I think that what we need to be clear about is that it sounds like if we get one more vote and we're not going to do it this year, that we need, the direction is that staff needs to come back with something more clear and we need to work on something that's more concise about what the voters would actually be voting on.
Any other comments from council? Right now, I, go ahead, Ms.
Mr. Mayor, I think you might have missed my, so I, I agree. Thank you so much. So I agree, I do think we should be clear and I just, because I don't want to defer this, since we're already in this conversation, is there agreement from my colleagues that there should be some level of information for the voters explaining that it would be a big list, making sure they want to invest in it? So saying something in the ballot language like contract with a consultant or something to let them know that there's a fiscal impact of this as well. I just want to ask as a threshold question if other people find that important.
I don't think anybody is disputing that it's going to be a cost or a heavy lift. I think the only question right now is, do you want to go through something in the ballot, either in 2020 or 2021, depending on which way you're leaning? But the language and the information to be given to the public is still yet to be determined and that would not be in the question, but that would be in the support of the question. And that would not be in the question, but that would be in the support of the question. So similar to a blue book.
So you have. So I want to be clear, I would like some level of it in the question. So some level in the question.
Well, that will be determined when we write the question. That's not what we're trying to do tonight. We're just trying to figure out if we're going to do it in 2020 or 2021. And if it's going to be in 2021, then everything we're doing right now is going to have to be done again because we don't have a clear, concise opinion of everybody on the question. Mr. Seymour, you have a comment?
You would think I'd be better at this by now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that my silence was not a concession, but I prefer 2020.
Yes, I understood. Right now, I I see it right now, based upon the comments, is we have three council members in support of continuing on 2020. We have three that want to go to 2021. We have comments regarding about the completeness of the question or the information to be provided. I myself, I still don't see that there is a major upheaval or a request for this from the general public. I don't agree that we need to be putting this in now. I don't have any problem with the proposal from Ms. Scully. So unless I'm wrong, I have, right now, I'm counting myself, I have four people who said, go for 2021, clean up the language, get the question resolved, and get that put together along with staff before this comes a ballot issue for 2021. Is anyone to say that I have not represented this appropriately?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Demont. I would just say that, at least me, I I'm willing to add my name to the 2021 in lieu of not being able to do 2020. So I I think if you you don't clearly have a consensus for 2020, I think there were the rest of us that still wanted to support the 2021 in lieu of it, or at least I will.
And I think I heard Ms. Smith say that it wasn't 2020, she would support 2021 as well.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Seymour, would you like a like a last comment?
No, I I I do not want this issue to die. So it clearly is a situation that we're going to be looking to 2021. And we have the opportunity to tighten up the language. It is what it is.
All right, council, I'm going to close this portion of the council meeting. I think that completes all the business. Mr. Tripp, Mr. Frankel, Ms. Parker, Mr. Lindsay, thank all of you for the time and effort. This is something we will be looking at as a potential ballot question for 2021. And in the meantime, there's a lot of work to be done about the information to be given to the public, trying to determine what the true impact of this would be on a cost basis and making sure that we can come to an agreement that the council can support the language to be presented to the public. There are no other comments or questions. Tonight, we are adjourned.
Good night, Mr. Mayor. Good night, council.